I'm turning my mic on then. You're off the hook till January 20th? Holy cow.
It's quarterly, remember?
Yeah, that's true.
All right, good evening. We're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Bath Charter Township Board of Trustees Meeting for Monday, November 17th, 2025. Welcome, everyone. We'll start with the roll call.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Butler Chandler here. Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Hagerman?
Here.
Mr. Kotke?
Here.
We're missing trustee.
Yeah, Mr. Rosecrans.
Here.
Ms. Kellerman's. I'm like, I'm going in alphabetical order.
You mixed her up.
So, Ms. Kellerman's absent this evening.
Item two on our agenda is the civic reflection. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance and end with a moment of silence. So, please stand and join us if you're able for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, item three is approval of the agenda. I sent you all an email about some changes that I want to make, but I didn't write them on here, so bear with me.
I misunderstood. I thought you already changed it.
So, we need to add an item to items for discussion. New business, D. Health insurance, we'll just call it. And then.
Was it 113?
14 is the right place. Do you think that's the right place?
Yep, new business.
14, A, D. And then 14, B, A would be.
Healthcare action.
Yeah, action to empower the superintendent to contract on our behalf for health insurance.
What item did you want that to be?
14, B, A. Big B, small a.
Oh, items for action, yeah, okay.
Sorry about that. I usually feel better prepared.
No, you don't.
I'll try. Other changes? Karen, any changes from you?
No.
Can I ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move we change, we accept the agenda as amended.
Second?
You have a motion. Second, is there discussion, concerns, questions? All right, let's do a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the amended budget, or excuse me, the amended agenda tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got an agenda. Are there any disclosures of conflicts of interest tonight?
Are they not impacted by the buzz, the benefits? Does that count?
Do you want to disclose a conflict because you get the benefits?
No.
No? Nope.
Clarence?
Yeah, I don't think that arises at all over conflict because it's decided. Or today, I think it'll be authorized from the superintendent to proceed forward, but I don't think that your individual benefits would rise to the disclosure of the conflict of interest because it generally is applicable throughout the township.
Yep.
I agree.
All right, you earned your fee to that.
You can go.
No, we still need it. All right, so I'm hearing no disclosures of conflicts of interest. Item five is public statement one. Anybody from the public can join us to talk about items on the current agenda. Appears we have no public, so I'm gonna just ease on past that, okay? But we do have an item from county, state, federal, and/or other agencies. Last year, maybe it was earlier this year, we had Representative Surtiglu come and tell us about what was happening around Lansing. I extended that same invitation to Senator Singh. He's joining us tonight, and I asked him to tell us what we should know, what's going on in Lansing, any budget items that we need to know about, anything that would be helpful for local government officials to know. So, thank you for joining us, Senator.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Supervisor and members of the board. Thank you for having me. So, yeah, I'll talk a little bit about some of the items in the budget, but I'm also here to take any feedback that you have as members back into our work for next year. I think it would be an understatement to say that this has been a unique year, both from a federal as well as a state policy level. You know, we started the year as we normally do with a budget that was presented by the governor, went through some of the normal process in the Senate, but a number of things got slowed down as we worked with our colleagues in the House. And as all of you know, we spent many moments into the month of October hitting a deadline that we didn't want to hit, which was the fiscal year for the state of Michigan. As you probably know, the legislature, in between the time I was in the House and the Senate, passed a law, you know, requiring themselves to pass a budget by June 30th. It's one of the reasons why they did that was because of local governments like yourself, all of our school boards, a number of other institutions that have July 1st deadlines. And unfortunately, we went significantly beyond that. We ended up having a kind of a continuing resolution into a final budget, you know, a few days after the October 1st deadline. The good news and bad news of that is, you know, one, we kept the government open, which was, I think, a key fundamental part of the conversation. But there were some areas that I believe were, because of having to negotiate in good faith with everyone, that unfortunately were probably not the things I would have liked. When you take a look at the comparison to the governor's budget or even the budget of passage Senate, there are a number of areas that I thought were deficient in the end, but at the same time, that's what compromise is about, is kind of coming to that together. One of the biggest issues that we resolved within the budget was a conversation around roads and how we fund roads going forward. And so, I wanted to acknowledge that here because it has an impact, both in a positive as well as a negative way to the township. So, the first piece is for a long time, including the time when I was in the House in the mid 2010s, was this conversation about all the taxes that we pay at the pump. Right now, we used to pay a sales tax at the pump, and that sales tax went to the normal functions of government. That sales tax went to schools, it went to local governments, including townships and cities. Then there was a little bit beyond that that went to the general fund to the state. But when you talk to your average resident at home, they always thought, hey, if everything that I'm paying at the pump probably should go to the roads, whether it was federal taxes, state taxes, including the sales tax. And so, what was presented was a swap. And so, what we did there was we took the sales tax that was currently on that, we have now removed that from gasoline, but we increased the gas tax by an equal amount. So, if you're a customer going to the pump, you're gonna pay the same as you would have, but now the formula is different. That extra gas tax goes through a new formula, and a big part of that new formula is about helping local roads. And I'll talk about that in a second. Where there is a negative impact is onto local government funding. Schools were kept whole in this process, but cities and townships who received a portion of that sales tax no longer received that sales tax. And so, that was a negative part of that. In the Senate conversations, including in our Senate budget, we wanted to fully fund what was the revenue estimates there, and unfortunately, in the final negotiations with the House, we were not able to get there. So, you will see that set of revenue, about 8%, not coming to the township going forward. Now, what did that go to fund? It went to go fund a set of funding for the roads. Now, for a township, unfortunately, that doesn't help you directly because that goes to the county road commission here in Clint County. Why I bring that up is I think there are opportunities to work with the road commission. One of the things that we did put into the legislation was the ability for counties, whether it's done by the county administration or by a roads commission, is to potentially remove matching requirements to the, to other local governments, or lessen matching requirement. Because of all this new revenue coming into the counties, that was one of the encouragements that we made. We didn't mandate it, so that means it will be a conversation between all of the townships and county government. So, that is one component of it. We also then, just to finish off the formula, we also took some corporate income tax and now dedicated it towards the roads, and you probably heard about a wholesale tax on marijuana that also went to go fund the roads. So, it's about a total of $1.9 billion of road funding. Some of it goes through the normal formula, but a whole new set of those dollars go to local governments through a formula that is focused on more dollars of resources going to counties and cities that do road repair. So, I mentioned that, one, because I think you can have a conversation with the road commission in regards to the matching requirements, and I think all the townships in the county should have that probably together as a joint set of governments to talk about that. But I think more uniquely here, because we have been in a conversation, my office and township officials, about the Chandler Road reconstruction. I think, as you know, I was successful in getting some additional dollars into the budget for Chandler Road reconstruction, and we've been having a debate on how far can those dollars go for the township? And how far can we go north with those repairs? Well, now that there's this new set of dollars coming into the county, I think it's a great time to have, revisit that conversation, because I do think some of the things that the township wanted the county to be able to do together, we probably didn't have the resources, but now that there's this new pot of dollars and resources, perhaps we can. And so, like I said, I don't know what will happen from those conversations, but I think it's the ideal time, because there's now new dollars that are coming in starting next year into the Clint County Road Commission. So, I look forward to using my office to help facilitate any of those conversations. You know, our budget process will continue. Because of how late we did it this year, we're about to be, you know, getting to the holidays, and then the governor, by constitution, will be sending out her budget again in February. I do think here is when I would recommend to local government officials, especially those who are disappointed about the cuts in revenue from the sales tax swap, is to make the case to all of the legislature, all the people who sort of represent you and maybe even in other parts of the state through the Township Association. There have been proposals, you know, brought forward by the Township Association, the Michigan Municipal League, looking at a revenue funding trust fund that would secure dollars and resources. I think you've all sort of talked about that in a positive way. I think those types of conversations are uniquely applicable to next year, especially since we saw the negative impact for this year. And I would just recommend elected officials across the state to start those conversations with all of us in the legislature now. And as a supporter of the revenue trust fund, you know, I'll continue to lend my support to that, and so be pleased to work with you and others on that. I do think, as we take a look at the budget in this upcoming year, we do have a set of, you know, constraints coming from the federal government. We saw those in regards to Medicaid dollars and resources. We saw that as well as in some of the business taxes that now will not be collected, and so therefore, state budgets are impacted by that. The state budget, as you know, is about 40% federal dollars. So, as there are significant cuts at the federal level, that impacts the state level, and then obviously that goes down to other agencies that we fund. But, you know, as we start this new process for the budget, my hope is that it will be done in a more timely fashion. I think sometimes when you have an election year, it forces my colleagues to focus on a deadline, maybe a little bit sooner than this last deadline. So, I am a little bit more optimistic that will be done by June 30th. So, you'll know as your budget year is starting up where we're at, but we'll continue to work in that direction. So, let me just stop there. I know I talked a lot, but I wanted to at least share with you the largest piece of impact, which I think, like I said, roads with new dollars going into local road systems, but at the same time, the revenue impact to the township. So, let me stop there and see if there's any questions I can answer on what I've talked about, or if there's any other ideas you'd like me to consider since we're here, and if we can do that offline as well, if this is not the appropriate forum. So, I'll just stop there and turn it back to you, Mr. Supervisor.
Questions? Ray?
I just wanted to know, off the top of your head, do you know how much additional revenue CCRC will get by virtue of that?
You know, that's a great question, and I probably should have done that research.
I didn't expect you to have it off the top of your head, but I just.
Unfortunately, I don't have it memorized.
What happens if the marijuana tax is ruled unconstitutional?
Yeah, so, right now, there is a lawsuit that's been filed. It's my understanding that at the, right around when we get back from kind of the Thanksgiving holiday, there will be at least some level of judgment from the first level of the court system, and that will probably continue all the way throughout the process. If those dollars are found to be not eligible, you could see about 400 to 420 million dollars of the revenue into that program be considered illegal, and that, you know, we'll see where the court case comes out on that. I do think that there's also other venues, if that looks like it's not gonna go in the right direction, that might open up another set of conversations, which we have been having with those in the marijuana industry right now about other potential tax systems that might not be as high as the 24% wholesale tax, but could be maybe done on a retail level, at a smaller level, but could generate more revenue. So, we're having those types of conversations. But it will be many months, I think, before we have a full understanding of the legal impact. The other, you know, 1.5 billion is solid, and that stuff will begin moving towards through the new formula, but that last piece is one piece that is being, you know, dealt with by the courts at this moment.
Will they hold it before they spend it?
I think that's what is being looked at at this point in time. You know, if a judge is to have questions about the legality, oftentimes, they will hold something before layering in the tax. Now, the other component here is Treasury did come forward with a set of rules on how to sort of implement the tax. And for year one, they, the tax will be due by a wholesaler at the end of the year. And then, from then forward, it'll be like how your taxes are done if you're an independent consultant or something like that, every quarter. They would have to pay just like other business tax, but because it's a brand-new tax that gets started in January, the actual payment to the state does not happen until the end of the year. So, that component of that, even if it was, you know, implemented without, you know, a lawsuit, would still be a lagging factor because the dollars will come in at the end of the, end of the year.
Other questions?
I have a couple more for you.
Okay.
There's always talk after the budget passes about a supplemental, and everyone thinks they're gonna get money in the supplemental. Are you all talking about a supplemental budget bill? Is there talk about what might be in it?
So, currently, right now, we are looking at what is called a transfer process, so departments can take a look at different types of transfers. And so, I know the Senate Appropriations Committee led by our Mid-Michigan State Senator Sarah Anthony, who I share the region with, has begun the process of that transfer process. That's a little bit different than a supplemental. In the supplemental, there are discussions about a supplemental. Supplementals typically happen at the end of the fiscal year when we're closing off the books, and so some of that can be done by transfer, and so some of those will be done by transfer, but others will be potentially done by a supplemental. And so, what I've been told is there, because of the rush, because this budget process did not happen in the normal timeframe, and then in the last, you know, four or five days, there was a lot of activity. Oftentimes, when that happens, there are drafting errors in very simple, you know, provisions. And so, you know, on any given year, I've found like a supplemental usually comes by, and there's at least 10 fixes to things that were in the budget in a normal year. So, you take a look at this very truncated, fast thing, as we tried to get the budget done to hit that next deadline, I would assume that there's probably 75 things that got mixed up. And so, that might not be new dollars. That might just be language and boilerplate that need to be fixed and things like that. And so, my sense is there will be a set of supplementals that will just fix those types of things that are more technical in nature. But at the same time, you know, there are people advocating for new dollars, if there are new dollars to be allocated. There's not that much sitting on the balance sheet, but if there are requests, you know, if your association is making a request, or you as a, as an entity are making a request, I think you should always put those out there now, whether it's for a supplemental or for the next budget cycle. It's appropriate to be talking about that, but my gut tells me that it won't be significantly new dollars. It'll be just more cleaning up technical mistakes that happen in the budgeting process.
We've heard a lot of talk from the federal government about a lot of things, but specifically that part of the effort to eliminate departments or eliminate staff would be that states would get block grants sent to them to give out to schools and different entities. Has the state seen any block grants or additional funds from the federal government? Is that a real thing? Are you all counting on that?
Well, I do think there, you know, was a budgetary process, and as part of that reconciliation of other bills, you know, we are seeing dollars coming into the state. But for example, education is probably the easiest example, right? There has been a discussion by the secretary as well as by the president to eliminate the Department of Education. What they're suggesting is that they would then take those dollars and send them to the state in a black, block grant format. We have not seen that and what that would mean. You know, there's a considerable amount of our school districts across the state that receive Title I funding. It is, you know, predominantly in urban areas and very rural areas of the state that receive those dollars, and so I know everyone's anticipating what that is. Now, we've been told that there would also be a cut to that, so you might not be seeing the same amount, but you might be seeing less, but it might be in a block grant format. At that point, that might, that might be then left up to the legislature or potentially a governor to decide how something is sent out versus maybe the more prescriptive formula that the federal government might have had at one point in time. So, we have not seen yet, you know, complete block grant programs that are replacing other existing programs, but that has been the intent, at least what was told to us, and so we'll have to wait and see. You know, we've been working with a lot of different groups and different departments on dollars and resources. You know, we had, whether it was in the healthcare space, or, you know, we had farmers who had, you know, grants with school districts to provide food, that those dollars got unfortunately canceled by the USDA and by the president, and so we've had a lot of kind of turmoil on top of, you know, the tariffs that, you know, some businesses are paying now and trying to deal with. So, there's been a lot of what I would call kind of a chaotic atmosphere, and I know groups are coming to us constantly saying, hey, can you look at a new set of funding for us here because we've seen the federal cuts that are coming over here? But some of that will get better known over the next months to come now that the federal government is open, but you had a 30-plus, you know, day closing of the federal government, and so some of the things that we were expecting, you know, obviously didn't happen, and so we'll have to wait and see how some of that rolls out.
My last question. Can you explain to us the earmark legislation you all just passed?
Sure.
And would that affect something like the $10 million that went to the County Road Commission for Chandler Road? What would we have to do?
Yeah, so I think overall, you know, we have been changing the earmark process over the, since I've been in the legislature in the last three years. And so, it's become more and more transparent as we, as we're going each year through. I can't speak to the four years while I was gone, but in the, when I was in the House, there was no money for earmarks. There was a limited number, but because of some of the federal dollars and resources, you saw a larger amount, you know, for a period of time. What the new legislation basically does is say that a legislator who's requesting an earmark, as I did for the Chandler Road piece here, is that that would now have to be announced 45 days before the vote of the final budget where that earmark might find itself in. So, you know, typically, what we did, or what I did, is I would contact communities, get their feedback, and then I would present something to the Appropriations Chair saying, hey, I request this. For my own process in my own office, we often asked for letters of support because we wanted to show that if anybody had a question on, you know, what we are asking for, that there was support for it in the community. And so, we ended up getting, over the last three years, three different earmarks for the Clint County Road Commission, and the road commission, and each of those instances sent us a letter saying, this is the money we are looking for, this is the impact that it would have, and so forth. But now, there's, will also be a process that is open, that every legislator would have to fill out sort of the same document that had information about who's gonna get the money, how long the money was going to be used for, spent, and so forth. So, I don't think it changes anything that would come to the community. I think you just have to be much more at the beginning of the process than near the end of the process. You know, oftentimes, we would get people, let's say the budget's supposed to be done at, in June, somebody calling us at the end of May saying, hey, you know, we've got this issue, we were thinking about something, that would no longer be eligible. So, you'd have to be at least in the process for 45 days. So, if there is something that is of interest to the township, or something you're doing in collaboration with other communities or the county, I would suggest that you, as soon as the governor's putting out a budget in February, you're sending us that type of information as well.
So, the request timeline is on the legislator's behalf, not on our behalf?
Right.
So, you all have to put something forward?
Yeah, we would put something forward, but we would be looking to you all to help us develop that if that was something that was for the township, for example.
Right, but like, we'd have to convince you to also put forward our thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's helpful, thank you.
And in this case, you'd be also competing with three counties' worth of constituencies, right? You know, we're a small group, but if you're, go to the upper peninsula, my colleague has 14 counties, so.
But we're the best. We're the best in that three counties, so. Any other questions before I let the senator continue? What else do you want to share with us?
I feel like that's a lot. I want to thank you for your time, and thank you for all the work that you're doing. I do want to just say, since I'm here, you know, if you could send my regards to your police department and your fire department. I know, obviously, the plane crash was a difficult thing for the community. I want to thank them for their stellar work. I know I was contacted a couple times to sort of help some conversations between the state and some of the local response, and so I was pleased to do that, but please give them, you know, my regards and thank them for their professional conduct.
Well, and that goes back to you. Thank you for being available that night and that week and responsive to our needs, and we don't know if you're the person who got the pheasants not to be released into the forest, but you should take credit because we're really thankful that that didn't happen.
I have just one last question. Would you like a water after all that talking?
No, I'm all right. I appreciate it though. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. We've got minutes from the Planning Commission. Would someone like to pull the minutes out to be discussed or put a motion forward to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. We do not take discussion with the consent agenda, so we'll move right into a roll call vote.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kotke?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes. That brings us to the approval of minutes, item eight. We have minutes of the Board of Trustees Meeting, November 3rd. Is there any changes, requests, questions, or a motion to move those forward?
I'll make a motion to accept the board meeting minutes from November 3rd.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the Board of Trustees Meeting from November 3rd, 2025 as presented, say aye. Hearing none. We'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting from November third, twenty twenty-five as presented, say aye. Aye. Any, uh, against? None. So that motion passes as well. That brings us to item nine, which is the approval of vouchers. It looked like everyone had signed the vouchers when I, uh, took a peek. Is there someone who wants to move them forward or are there questions or discussion about vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kotke?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion carries as well. Our next treasurer's report will be on January twentieth. There are no committee appointments tonight or township committee reports. Uh, that brings us to item thirteen, unfinished business. Uh, we have items for introduction and discussion. We have the budget recommendation from the finance committee. Supervisor, do you want to start that?
I would love to. Um, you also have in your packet a notice of the budget, um, public hearing. We are required to put that notice out, uh, a certain amount of time prior to that public hearing, uh, which happened to fall, I think, last week. So we have that set for December first, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock PM. Uh, that does not mean that we cannot continue to have some discussion and, um, continue to work on the budget. It just means that we will hold that public, uh, input session at that time and then move to change, uh, or move to approve the budget for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year at the meeting on December fifteenth. So we have to have the public hearing held, uh, by the fifteenth. Uh, we just have to have the budget approved by the, uh, end of the year, which is December thirty-first. So we are in line to have those timed correctly and done, uh, in the time that is allotted for those. Um, but please, I, um, I know this is always a process that happens, um, somewhat quickly, somewhat slowly, and is different each year. So if you have any questions tonight, please, um, feel free to ask, uh, as we're going through the budget. My plan here is to go page by page and let you know kind of where the changes were from the finance committee and what is different in this document as opposed to the document that I distributed September first, which was my recommendation. Um, in that, if you would like to ask any questions, um, I plan to move somewhat quickly only because, uh, there is fifty-some pages of the budget. Um, but please don't let that deter any questions or comments that you have. I do have one item that I will be asking for feedback on because it was undetermined at the finance committee level. And I think it's important for this group of people, or this group to have that conversation. So when we get to that, I will let you know. Um, starting on page one of the budget, um, so if I, uh, similar to our strategic planning, uh, if I do not hear, uh, comments or disagreements with what is on the page, I'm going to take that as consensus and I will continue to move forward. So if you do not agree with something as written, we'll have a short discussion here. I may even ask for an informal vote. We've done that in the past where there's been items where board members disagree. Um, the votes would not be official. It's just to help me understand if a majority of the board would like to move something forward or not. Um, if there's something different you would like to do, Mr. Supervisor, please let me know, but that seems to work the best.
No, that sounds good to me. Everyone else is okay with that?
Okay. In terms of revenue on page one, uh, page one and page two are revenues for the township. And this is where, um, our mileage dollars and then all our fees for service come into play. Uh, as the Senator, uh, just talked about, there was a decrease in revenue sharing for the township of approximately sixty-one thousand dollars. Um, it may not seem like a lot, but you all know sixty thousand dollars can go a long way. So it does, uh, in turn hurt us. Um, when you look at the bottom line, our budget is about sixty thousand dollars short from what it was be, uh, last year or this year, excuse me, this fiscal year, and where we're at, at this point. Um, so it does impact the bottom line. Other areas, um, the supervisor had asked me to, um, try to estimate some of the fees that were received better based on year-to-date amounts. So a lot of the fees that you see where they've increased, uh, is due to my taking a look at the year-to-date activity, which is the column all the way to the left, twenty twenty-five activity through eleven, twelve, twenty twenty-five, and, um, trying to guess or guestimate what we might bring in next year. Of course, these are, um, try to be educated guesses, um, but those will fluctuate next year. And you'll see those as we move throughout the year and you receive, um, finance reports. Any questions in particular on revenues? Al?
Yeah, the rent. Uh, is this on, uh, the buildings that we rent out?
So there's two different areas. So you're going to see one, um, which is rent for a cell tower. And then the other rent-
Is that the sixty-one thousand?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Um, we are currently, um, legal is reviewing, uh, an offer from the cell tower company. Um, our lease is, is going to be up and they've made us an offer. Um, legal is looking at that. We'll bring that back to the board for approval. Uh, but it looks to increase the amount of revenue that we receive for that cell tower. The others are listed as like gazebo rent, um, and BCC rent. So those are the other rental amounts. Those are much smaller.
Rent question?
Yes, sir.
Trailer taxes. Is that really all we get for?
Um, actually, the treasurer can answer that. She collects the fee from, uh-
Fifty cents.
Wow.
Yeah, every month.
And part of it, um, goes to the county.
Yep.
Um, and a, a very, very small part of it is kept here, which is three thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Why do we even have it?
There's over two hundred and fifty households.
Within two mobile home parks we have.
Is that a local?
It's a state.
State, oh.
Tax and have to pay when you own a trailer park.
So it's, it's, it's mostly a pass-through.
Yeah. It's a pass-through account.
From the trailer park to the county, to the state.
So I, I'm fairly ignorant on this. So, so we get no property tax pretty much from that two hundred acres?
So we would from the property owner, but not from the actual trailers-
Okay, so what is it? Oak Island Associates, uh, pays us?
Sunrise, sun, or whatever that-
Sun communities or-
Sunrise communities, yeah, that's what it is.
Um, would pay property taxes on the land that they own. Um, but the trailer, this is, I believe, collected from the, um-
Owners.
Tenants or owners.
Tenants, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's good education for me. Thank you.
Good. Any additional questions on revenue? Moving into page four. You're looking at the budget for the, uh, township board, and this houses, um, several items, uh, township-wide, including our liability insurance. Um, you will note a significant increase in insurance and bonds, which is about, uh, halfway down line one oh one, one oh one, eight oh two, um, of about two, an increase of about two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. This is a liability payment that is being required, required from MERS for the closing of our defined benefit for non-union employees. Um, so we have to now pay, and I, I think, um, Legal Counsel Mills had explained to you that in the short term, uh, this was going to hurt, and this is where it hurts. Um, the short-term payment, we now have to make up some of that liability. Um, in our payment, we're already making payments on this year, which was, I think, less than approximately forty thousand dollars. Um, but next year's is much more significant. We will not see a change in that liability until twenty twenty-seven. Um, so until we receive our, uh, uh, actuarial, I think, in twenty twenty-six, um, we will see the numbers change for twenty twenty-seven. But this keeps us on target and keeps us bringing down that liability. The other changes you see in that department were for a deus, which is the, uh, desk that you're currently sitting at as board members. We're hoping to be able to accomplish that this year. And then the education and training was reduced, um, by, uh, the amount that was lost, the, in, the, uh, township trustees and was put into the relevant departments for you all to, um, attend the MTA annual conference.
Where's the deus?
Uh, it was taken out.
Oh, it was taken out.
Yeah, so it was in miscellaneous, which is third from the bottom.
So you were saying that was removed?
It was removed because we're hoping to accomplish that this year, yet.
Oh, yet.
Yet, yet.
Ryan was. I'm perfectly happy with the green we have right here.
Okay. Noted.
Okay. Any questions on township board?
No.
Moving on to page six is the budget for the supervisor. You will note, uh, a minimal increase of two hundred and fifty dollars for mileage reimbursement and then the added cost for the supervisor to attend the MTA training. Other than that, there were no changes in that department. Questions?
Ryan's, why does Ryan get so much more money than me?
Actually, when you adopt the budget, you adapt, um, resolutions, uh, for payment of each position. So you would have the opportunity to change that if you so desire.
Just kidding.
I know. Thank you. Um, but you do see those when we adopt the budget. Um, each, uh, office has, uh, uh, an appropriation resolution. Um, just in case you're, don't remember or unfamiliar. Uh, the superintendent's office on page seven did not change, uh, from the finance committee. Um, we are seeing increases for, uh, pay. Um, my pay is per my contract and is, will be the same as it is this year. That was negotiated, uh, and approved by this board. And then you'll see an increase for benefits. Um, but those are the major, um, in, in most departments, uh, salary and benefits are the, the major line items for each department that has employees. Questions for superintendent department? Moving on to the assessing department on page eight. Uh, again, this department, um, has, uh, two full-time employees. Uh, and you'll see the, uh, salary for the assessor and the salary for the assessing assistant. And then the benefits, there were no changes made by the finance committee, so it's much, uh, the same as the recommendation I made to you back in September. Any questions there?
How did you do that?
Do what?
Guess that exactly.
Uh, it, I try. Uh, it is, uh, it's a, it's a labor of love that I go through in the month of, uh, August.
I can imagine. That's when all the work happens.
Why is the assessor's salary less?
Um, so this year you had, um, the assessor was paid out for some benefits. Um, and so what you're seeing is that was paid out this year. So what you're looking at, um, is actually, uh, a higher amount because of that payout, and then you're seeing the actual amount.
Okay, okay. I got it.
It also includes some overtime.
Yep. I did read that before. Okay.
Yep. Um, it's actually in the budget amendments.
Okay.
So you're, 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 you're tracing it back, but yes.
It's when we paid out or closed the DB to the DC.
Yes. Okay. So that's just-
That's why I heard.
Inclined for activity but not budgeted.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, moving to page ten, which is the clerks department. Uh, we, um, we're looking at, uh, relevant, um, comparisons. Uh, the, the clerk and deputy clerk of Watertown Township were good comparables for this position, including all of the new election. Uh, responsibilities and in addition, the clerk obtaining, obtaining, excuse me, a certification by the end of twenty twenty-five. So you'll note, um, two increases there in salaries, uh, and then the increase in training, uh, for the MTA conference. Questions on that department? Board of review on page eleven, uh, stayed the same from my recommendation. Uh, it's based mainly on the pay of four board of review members, including some mandatory training by the state. Uh, but no changes, uh, over my, my budget recommendation. I should point out, the clerk noted today that department two twenty, which was engineering, was missing. Um, I did remove that. It was eight thousand dollars and it took care of the monthly, uh, amount of meeting with the engineers. Um, I have removed that and put that completely in the sewer fund. All of our meetings with the engineers, if not Chandler Road, are sewer-related. And I felt that it was an unnecessary, uh, expenditure out of the general fund, so it's been moved to the sewer fund.
Do we appoint the board of review?
Uh, so the, I think it's every three years. Uh, the supervisor makes recommendations and you approve those members.
It must be coming up, so I don't think I've ever been part of it.
It happens in an odd year, so.
Yeah, I, I believe, um, they expire next year because I believe we approved them a year late last time.
So I'm guessing you'll see them at the end of twenty twenty-six for twenty twenty-seven. Okay. Okay, moving on to page twelve, which is the treasures department. Uh, the only change in that department was the training for the MTA conference. Um, otherwise it stayed, uh, similar to the recommendation, recommendation I made in September. Questions on the treasures department? Moving to page fourteen, uh, computer services. This is where our webpage, um, our IT consulting fees, our equipment and our software all come out of, uh, this department. Uh, you will note that it is down, proposed for twenty-six because we made a large, uh, expenditures this year in replacement of equipment. We don't anticipate that again, so it will be a, um, a down year next year of about fifteen, twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, but that is one of the items that we'll be keeping a good eye on for budget amendments as well for this year.
How come there's not a little arrow going down there?
Because the finance committee didn't make any changes.
But I do want to keep everybody aware, though, that that may have to change in twenty twenty-seven because BSNA, which is our software company, they're, are going to the cloud and we have that on net.
I thought they'd already done that.
No. Well, you can choose when you do it.
Yeah.
And we don't have the extra hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So it's in our CIP.
So it's in our CIP to do it, so.
To plan for it, but we're waiting.
Can we make our own cloud?
We're waiting for the county, um, to make the change before we make the change. Um, so we're, we're kind of in a hold pattern.
About the same time they do it.
Taylor, do you know any, off the top of your head, how many gig we put in the cloud or are we going to?
Ours is on a server.
This is for BSNA, so I have nothing to do with that.
I thought maybe we had it here now.
BSNA managers are on the server.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But we have some servers in the basement and one of them is for strictly for BSNA data. So that will be moved to the cloud.
Future bill.
Moving on to ordinance compliance on page fifteen. This is a, this is a part-time position that is shared with the fire department, making it a full-time position. So you only see half, uh, the costs associated with this department hitting here in this department. Uh, there were no changes from the finance committee, so it was, it's, uh, identical to the recommendation that I made back in September.
That's different than what Miles was-
Correct. So this is a position held by Roger Dunham. He, um, took that position this year and he is also the fire inspector for the fire department. So with both of those positions, he is a full-time employee.
I did have a question because I didn't notice like half of his raise in this position. Cause twenty-five is the same amount as twenty-six. I noticed that. I did-
It's because the previous ordinance compliance officer was making more when he left. And Roger is attaining his certifications and coming up to that amount. So, and Roger didn't, um, possess this, uh, position for the entire year. I can't remember when he started. May. So it hasn't been a, a full year and he's not fully certified.
Okay.
But is taking his trainings. Okay, moving on to page sixteen is elections. Of course, you know, next year we have the midterms. Uh, there were no changes by the finance committee, but I will point out that, uh, some new election equipment is going to be required by the county, correct, Brenda?
By the state.
By the state, I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me. Uh, and that will, um, result in us needing to spend some additional dollars, uh, in the near future. Uh, but that amount is not, uh, listed here. This is only for those elections, three to, uh, two to three elections that will be held, um, in twenty twenty-six.
Is the state going to share any of that burden?
At this time, there's no grant or anything available.
So, and having, having five precincts plus, uh, um, an absent, uh, help me.
Absentee voter.
AV county.
AV county, thank you.
There we go.
Um, it, it puts the onus on us for about several, several precincts to-
We should have asked about that one.
Yeah.
A little over a hundred thousand dollars we'll need.
Yeah.
Good earmark.
What if, what if, what if a township can't afford it?
I'm not sure the answer to that.
I mean, are we required to get a bond or something or what? I wonder.
I don't know. I don't know how smaller townships do it, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's, you know, I'm thinking of us, but yeah, that's very true.
Sometimes those are the unfunded mandates, uh, that we receive. Uh, moving on to page seventeen, the building and grounds department. Um, this is, uh- This is another one of those departments that is, that catches a lot of activities from multiple departments, but predominantly takes care of the township buildings and properties, but also includes general office and operating supplies as well. There's no employees in this department. So it is mainly the cost of doing business. You will notice two down arrows because the finance committee removed some parking lot maintenance next year for approximately thirty-one thousand. And then the land improvement, there was some tree work that we scheduled that were both removed from this budget, so resulting in a, in a savings on the bottom line. Any questions here? Not seeing any, go ahead.
There's no employees, it's just DPW, is that what it is?
No, this is building and grounds, so this is only the property in the buildings.
Oh, okay.
DPW is a separate department that's coming up in a couple of pages. So moving on to legal services. You can see here, we in fact use a lot of legal services for legal opinions, preparing and reviewing documents, contracts, advising the township. The attendance of legal counsel for our meetings is actually housed in the township board department, that first department we looked at after revenues. But this is all the other business that we need legal to assist us on, including FOIAs. And those expenses are captured here. We're projecting that to be flat next year and hoping that, we call on them when we need them and they're there, but hoping that stays flat next year. Moving on to department of public works, there are five full-time employees here. You will see these employees conduct all the maintenance, repair and improvement of the township buildings and property. And in addition to the five full-time employees, we usually have one to two seasonal part-time employees that assist us in the summertime, mainly with mowing and weed whacking in the cemeteries. They also help us with Tom King Junk Day, so we have those employees as well. I did, you will note down in equipment purchase, 101-441-977. The DPW director, Ben Zeeb, thinks that we can move the trade-in of the tool cat up to this year. We're being, we're being offered a very good deal for our current piece of equipment with a very low additional cost. So we're hoping to accomplish that this year as well. Fingers crossed, so that has been removed.
Bobcat thing?
Yes, tool cat.
It's the one that Ed doesn't like.
It, it, unfortunately, the quality of that piece of equipment has been low, I think, due to COVID, some of that COVID quality.
Bobcat brand has gone down considerably, I've just read it across the industry.
Yeah, I do know that we've had a lot of the same issues that MSU has with their fleet of, of tool cats, so.
And they're bringing all those.
Yep, so. So that would be a substantial savings for next year as well of approximately, I think, twenty-four or twenty-five thousand dollars. On page 19, you're going to see a new department. It's called ambulance, department 651. These are expenses related to our contract with Eaton Area EMS ambulance service. There would be no employees in this department. This is simply the cost of the contract that we have with Eaton Area. And at this time, that amount is thirty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. So that will live here now. No, you're completely fine, go ahead.
I'm going back to the drains.
Oh, I'm sorry.
DPW, it went from sixty thousand to thirty thousand from the finance committee.
So I would like the treasurer, if she can, to talk a little bit about that. I know that this was a conversation had when I was not at the finance committee. And I know there was some, a little bit of talk about other ways to finance it too. So if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, oh, about the drain that we do through Eaton County?
Correct.
Oh, there, we can possibly do a special assessment to pay for those. DeWitt Township does it, it's a long process. So I'm working on that to see if it's something that we can do to make up those seventeen thousand dollars that we did. It's where you would actually put that money and assess just the properties that the drain is on over there on Chandler Road. So it's the apartments and stuff, so we're working on that.
Okay. But in the past, the, the bills don't come at a, the bill for the, the drains at large and then the Remy Chandler don't come at a consistent time of year. And as you can see in 2025, and we looked back at 2024 as well, they don't always hit in the same fiscal year. So we're trying to better understand the timing of those bills and then if we can move forward with the special assessment as well. Okay. So that is one that will continue to flush out and firm up as we move forward.
Flush out the drains?
Yeah, flush out, yeah. No pun intended.
Trying to come up with revenue sources to pay for that.
That process is going through legal or?
We're currently researching it and then having legal.
I'm working on it, I like that.
She is.
Take credit where credit's due.
She does.
Township is.
There you go.
She is, she is, she does. Any questions on legal, DPW or ambulance?
The, I have a question.
Sure.
The, the ambulance, I see the finance committee budget is, is thirty-five-five and the recommended budget is zero.
Yeah, so when I added this department, I didn't put in my number, but this is the number from the contract. So it is, it is the number that we have basically, but I just didn't.
She missed it.
I missed it.
Is that pretty much going to be annual, that?
Correct, it's due January 1st each year.
Okay.
Yeah, for the, for the current contract that's.
I was going to say, is that a yearly contract? I can't remember.
It's a, I think this one goes through 2029. Twenty-twenty-eight or twenty-twenty-nine, so several years at that price.
Quite a bargain, I think it's.
Is the contract been signed?
No. We do have a draft back from U of M and we will be giving that over to legal counsel, Chris Patterson and his team to take a look at.
And he won't take half as long as U of M did.
He will not.
Right.
Nobody's legal, nobody's legal counsel will, from the behalf, on behalf of the municipalities.
We're not gonna pay until it's signed, right?
It, there was no payment for this year. The payment isn't scheduled until January 1st, but you are correct.
No, I, I understand.
You are correct.
It's been months, so if it takes even more months, I'd hate for us to pay them without the contract.
But they have been performing a service.
Correct.
How is that being?
We didn't agree to pay them any money.
Oh.
Because the contract doesn't sign.
Interesting. Okay.
It's the one thing we have over their head, right?
Clear as mud.
Sign the damn contract.
Yeah, that's true. Would, would it be retroactive then? Would we have to pay them for the services already rendered?
There, the contract calls for a payment on January 1st of 2026.
Okay.
So at this point, there's no payment due until January 1st.
Damn.
Now, is that for back or forward?
Uh, I think the way that it times out, it's forward.
But it could be back?
So there'd be a payment for 2026, 2027 and 2028.
Oh, okay.
Of this amount.
Oh.
At this time, there would be no retroactive due.
So technically, they're working off books for us right now and starts on January 1st, interesting.
Was their hearts for doing it?
Yeah, I don't, I, not a good way to do business.
Moving to Parks and Recreation on page 20. This is, this is the item that I wish to discuss with the board. A couple of members of the finance committee were opposed to the art project of twenty-five thousand dollars for the hundred year of the, of the bombing. Because this is a deficit budget. So what you see based on other recreation programs, line 787, was my initial recommendation of forty thousand dollars. And then what you see in the finance committee budget is a fifteen thousand dollar amount. And that's because I removed that. I wish for this board to have a, a discussion on that and to give me direction because of the disagreement amongst the finance committee members. And I don't know, Mr. Supervisor, if you'd like to speak to that? That was your recommendation?
You can elucidate on that.
Yeah, my recommendation was twenty-five thousand dollars. We would build an ad hoc committee to commission art, whether that's a painting, a statue, a mural, sort of ambivalent to what art it is. But to help the museum committee, it's not celebrate, it's more like honor, right? The hundredth anniversary. Recognize, to put some skin in the game from the township to recognize that community-oriented activity. That is what I requested, that's what Karen put in, in the finance committee. My colleagues disagreed with that and so we took it out. But I asked that we had that conversation with the full board on what you all want to do.
Is that in addition to the fifteen thousand?
Yes, it would be another twenty-five.
So it would be forty thousand.
So it would add twenty-five thousand dollars to the bottom line of the budget.
But the fifteen is something else?
Yes.
Yes.
But it's to the museum?
No.
No.
The twenty-five only.
When it was forty.
It's not to the museum.
It's not.
No.
What was the fifteen thousand for?
The fifteen is for other recreation programs in Parks and Recreation.
Already.
So an additional twenty-five thousand would be needed to fund the art project.
I can't remember if I was on the board at that time, but, but I swear, I remember the township giving the museum committee some money to do something.
Yeah, to do the.
And I thought it was fifteen thousand.
The dig, no, it wasn't fifteen, I think it might have been fifteen hundred.
We did.
Oh, the, the architectural.
We did architectural plans, yes. That was out of some DDA money.
And then when they had to.
And then the drilling into the ground.
Architectural survey. That was the sidewalks, though, that wasn't anything.
Yeah, that was.
But it was the same.
Same area.
Because of the historical context of the land.
And then also paid for the repainting and restoration of the cupola.
Yes.
That was about two thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Okay.
I say, I obviously am in support of that. I don't think you guys have to wonder where I stand on it. It is a one-time, the way I see it, is a one-time expenditure. This is not a recurring line item year after year after year. It's a one-time fund and the centennial for the school bombing is only going to happen one time. I suppose it's unfortunate that it happens to fall when we've had to make some tougher decisions in the budget, but I don't think twenty-five thousand dollars really seems like a significant amount, especially if we're going to save thirty thousand dollars on drains and we're kind of coming out ahead. I do think it's important for this community to have some contribution to this event that the committee is already in the process of planning. We've had a couple, actually, we're meeting the second time this week. Community meetings with interested groups, including people from the township, the school, the library, churches, Lions Club, other local groups are all banding together to start to brainstorm and, and each group is kind of starting to think about what they can contribute to this large-scale community event that we think is probably going to generate a significant amount of interest locally, statewide and perhaps even nationally. And I think for our township to be included in part of that would be pretty important, especially since we set our philosophy or mission statement or whatever it was in our comprehensive planning was to honor the history of our community. I feel like this sort of tramples on that by taking it out of the budget at this time. And I'll say why I don't think it should be in there, because we are in a deficit and it is not township appropriation money that we should use there. I just don't think it's an activity for us to support right now.
The location, do we have a location where would?
We don't even know what it's going to be. We don't know where it's going to be set up. The school already has limited space in the museum they hold. I mean, if you're going to put a big art thing, you know, I just don't think at this time we should be doing it.
I think it's a grand idea, but again, like, how did we come up with the twenty-five thousand figure and? Did you have, you know, statues, balloons, pictures, murals?
I don't know that the type of art actually matters.
All right. No, well.
You know what I mean? I don't, it's our decision.
It does, because we're, we like to get, you know, a good bang for the buck, but it's pretty.
I mean, seven of us could come up with what art we think it is, but I, it just doesn't feel like we have that expertise and it is not community-driven if it's just us.
True.
So I would imagine whatever we would task the ad hoc committee to do would have the limitations of what exists in reality, right? Like, they're not going to build something that wouldn't fit in the museum if that's where they want it. They're not going to have a mural that's eighteen foot high if we don't have a wall for that.
Two things. Twenty-twenty-seven is the anniversary. So theoretically, we could do it in two budgets. And the twenty-five thousand is an arbitrary figure that we could maybe hone down a little bit and do it over two years. That's, you know, if this group decides, yes, let's put it in the budget. Are we going to have a vote or?
Is this something that we have to ask the school? I mean, we have a hundred-year rental. Do we have to ask the school if we can do this?
Well, that would be only if it was in James Cousins.
Yeah, if it was placed in the park, we would.
Or at the, on the school grounds, that's the only, only way we would have to. Because the bombing happened in Bath Township, on Bath Township property, you know, at that time.
At that time.
At that time, it was school property. It was school property.
It was school property.
It still is.
It was school property.
I, I know that, but I thought the township at that time.
It was the school. It's the school property. It still is the school property.
From the, from the, anyway, from the consolidation.
I mean, my, my sort of assumption was that it would be some sort of outdoor art piece. I guess that was just my personal assumption.
Probably mine too.
I, I feel that that's certainly more public. Obviously, the museum is a public place, but I feel that that outdoors is more public. You know, thinking back to the actual Bath School disaster, there are two images that come to mind that are so intimately tied with that, which is one is the cupola and then the second one is the girl with the cat statue.
Correct.
Commonly called the Penny Girl, paid for by pennies donated from children throughout the state of Michigan, who the governor at the time said, this is a campaign that we can start so that these kids can feel connected to those who are lost in this disaster by sending their pennies into this fund to honor them in some way. And with that money, they commissioned the girl with cat statue by Carlton Angel, who was a sculptor from Ann Arbor. And they paid for that statue and it sat in the rebuilt school from when it opened till when it closed in nineteen seventies. And I didn't go to that school because I'm too young.
Seventy-four.
But.
I went there.
I know many people who have, including some sitting at this table. And I, there, there's, could not be more fondness for that particular object that the students who went to that school have than probably any other thing. When they come to that Golden Alumni Reunion, everybody has a story. So I walked by it, I would touch it every day when I walked into school. It's something that is so connected to their memories of that building and the time that they spent there. And that is public art.
And what are you suggesting?
That is exactly what that girl with the cat statue is. It's public art, paid for with public money as a gift to the people of the Bath community. And I think the impact from it has been immeasurable. And if we can spend a few dollars out of this budget, which I don't know what percent that would be, but is less than one point, 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 whatever.
Out of an eight million dollar budget.
Exactly. I don't think that that is a significant burden to ask the taxpayers of Bath Township to support.
I certainly don't think we'd get any negative feedback from the, from the people in this township, the residents that pay taxes.
But you have to also remember that not everybody goes to Bath Schools in Bath Township.
Right.
That's true, but the Bath School disaster did occur in Bath Township. And I, I don't expect Hazlitt or every, any of the other schools to probably support that with a similar financial, I mean, we could ask, but. Bath Township, Bath Schools are the only school district wholly in Bath Township.
Now, do you have thoughts?
I agree, I think we should put, I'm not sure, maybe twenty, fifteen this year and fifteen next year or something, but I think we should donate something to the school. And I did walk by that every day.
We used to have to run from that school in the winter down to the, where the high school was then, it's now the middle school, after gym with wet hair, getting just gotten out of the shower.
Uphill both ways.
Uphill, I almost said it.
In the snow, literally.
Uphill both ways.
Uphill both ways.
It was miserable.
Well, it sounds like there's three that are in support. Ray, where do you come out on this?
I would support it.
And Brandon, do you have any changing thoughts?
I would support it, if we could do it on a two-year basis, you know, two-budget basis, just to split it up and make it a little less hurtsome on the budget itself, you know? Just to split it up and make it a little less hurtsome on the budget itself, you know.
Well, we are drawing a ton of money already for public safety. I mean, if you go to the next page, you look at the transfers out. I mean, you gotta remember how much money we are spending on things that we have to pay for. This isn't an item that we have to pay for.
More is our raises, but we're also giving each of us a raise.
Well, we could say forget that.
We could. I mean, we're, we're drawing the deficit of like seven hundred thousand dollars. That is why the twenty-five doesn't hit me as much as it normally would. Um, you're not wrong, right? Like, we're drawing down a huge amount of money.
Yes, we are.
The twenty-five, to say like we're gonna save that by cutting the twenty-five, to me feels like we, we could have taken a sharper pencil to the rest of us too, if we really wanted to.
Well, you say that.
Wait, where are you saying seven hundred thousand? Cause I'm looking at one point five million.
What page?
Taken out of our general fund fund balance.
So that is.
No, that's just taken out of the general fund.
That's general fund. So it's a transfer, it's a transfer from the general fund. So until this budget work, came through tonight, I will not do the figures that shows you how much you're taking from the general fund fund balance.
Okay.
The estimate we had at the last meeting was seven hundred thousand.
Correct.
It probably is more due to some of these other things.
In that, we have some extraordinary expenditures this budget. How about if we change, just shave it down this year to ten or fifty?
I mean, it's very possible that when you assemble a group to work on this, they may choose something and an artist may choose a, a medium that doesn't cost twenty-five thousand dollars.
They may very well donate.
Correct. There, there could be, there could be a plethora of, of reasons why this is less different. So, I, I think, I, I did the same thing in, in conversations with the supervisor. Like, you tend to get out ahead of yourself and you tend to try to plan it. Well, if they did this, or if they did this, um, but if, if we just organically let that process happen, we can hone in on that number. It doesn't mean we spend twenty-five thousand. It means that that's what's available at this time to fund that project. And if it comes in less and it achieves the same feeling, then great.
How about little statues of the girl with cat? Oh, wait a minute, I already did that. That would be a conflict of interest.
So, I, my recommendation at this time is that it would stand as twenty-five thousand dollars back into that if we could do it over two years, but I know the goal is to get it done by twenty-twenty, May of twenty-twenty-seven. So of course, if that can be accomplished in twenty-twenty-six, or if it can be split across two fiscal years, we would try to do that. But I'm, I'm asking at this time for you not to probably manage that process so closely that you don't allow for the process to happen. And I would say, yes, your, your answer would be you're in support of it or you're not.
Well, what is your recommendation?
Um, my recommendation would be to, to support it.
Okay, at that, at that amount?
But I had it, yeah, I had it in my budget recommendation.
Oh, no, no, I know. I just wanted to hear it from you.
Twenty-five thousand dollars, I would recommend it.
You have a dog in this fight, so that's why I like to ask.
Mm-hmm, thank you, I appreciate that.
It sounds like without taking an official vote, there is some numbers behind supporting keeping it in.
Okay.
Al?
Yeah, I'm for it.
Okay. So I will make that change.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you.
Well, for that dissertation, that was good.
Anytime you want. You wanna know, I can talk about anything.
Oh, I know that.
So that, um, so far is the only change that you've made to this budget. Um, you'll see that reflected in the document that comes to you at the next board meeting. If there are no additional questions for Parks and Recreation, I will move on to, um, page twenty-two. Operating transfers out, so this is general funds that will be transferred to both public safety and the senior center.
Karen, I did have one more question.
Oh, yeah, go on.
I'm sorry. I had mentioned this at our last meeting and I wasn't sure what page it fell on, but I wanted to make sure I asked again. Speaking of the park, we had talked about a flagpole.
Yes.
I had mentioned that. Is that something that it just would be a zone one-off?
So, staff, staff will work on that and it would be, I think, um, the cost would be minimal, so I think.
That's kinda what I thought, but I didn't wanna forget.
But thank you for, I'm gonna write it in a note. Okay, so, um, as the supervisor and the treasurer pointed out on page twenty-two, one point, almost five million going to public safety and then a hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred going to the senior center. Any questions on that? Those are the only two departments that are funded from the general fund.
Are some of those funds going to public safety for that new tasers, the new cars, new cameras, all that?
The, the, yes, yes and, and no. Most of the money is being transferred to, would be transferred to the fire department. There's a significant cost increase of operations there. Um, but yes, uh, the body cams, the car cams and the new tasers, yes, is part of the, uh, police department.
Yeah, I couldn't remember if we'd been able to get that into that ARPA allotment or.
So, ARPA money is, is gone.
I know it's gone. I just wondered if we had been able to.
We initially bought the, some of the new body cams and new car cams, um, with that money. But now they're coming up and there's a, this is a new contract of that previous project.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Um, so if you move down on page twenty-two to the public safety department, um, so this is the revenues of police and fire. You'll see, um, the police and fire taxes amount of two point four million. Uh, there's a small amount of revenue sharing that comes in, known as local community stabilization funds, uh, twen, about twenty-one thousand dollars. And then at the bottom, the operating transfer in is that amount coming in from the general fund, totaling almost three point nine million dollars for public safety.
So it's more than double of twenty-twenty-five?
Correct.
And is that a one-time deal, or are we gonna be expected to do that every year?
You're, you're going to be looking at, uh, as I mentioned earlier this year, there needs to be some frank discussions about revenue. That this budget is projected to deficit spend out of the general fund, uh, fund balance. Uh, and this township needs to, uh, come up with ways to both, um, create, uh, some new uh, revenue, um, to continue operations, or we're gonna have to make some significant cuts to operations. So I think there, over the next, um, probably three, four, five months, we're gonna have to have some conversations about revenue.
The finance committee was going to pitch to you all that we go over a different revenue opportunity each meeting leading up into the time where the budget would be done, where we'd have to determine if we want to take on any of those, if we instead want to do deeper cuts and to get where we need to go. But to really give us all an opportunity to understand what are the special assessments, what are the millages, what are the opportunities that we have in front of us, uh, to try to make the best decision for the future. We won't be able to deficit spend like this beyond really two, maybe three years before our fund balance is at zero. So where we sort of landed at the finance committee was this, our intention would be that this is the last deficit budget in a long time, in that our intention would be to find new revenue.
So it's going to be the last deficit budget in a long time, is what you're saying?
Well, if we approve it, and we don't approve it, one in the next year, yes.
But it, it depends on all of you.
I just have one idea, bake sale.
The senior center's already doing that.
Best peanut butter cookies ever.
I'm thinking cheese.
So on page twenty-three, if there are no questions about the revenues for the fund, um, here is the planned spending for the fund. You will see, uh, to the tune of about one point three six million, um, salaries uh, and benefits are a huge part of this department in addition to the equipment needed to, um, keep our community and our officers safe. You will note, uh, approximately a budget of two point four three six million. Nothing changed from the finance committee in terms of this budget. We are looking into some items and seeing if, um, possibly, um, the, our liability insurance or our current health, new health benefit would help us with some wellness, uh, items for the police department. Um, and then, uh, of course, paying down the Axon, uh, contract at the end of this year will determine how much we owe in future years of that contract. So, um, things that we do now can impact some of that spending, uh, and if the benefits are covered in a different way. So we will continue to look for opportunities. Just because you approve this, we will continue to look for opportunities to save, change, and do differently.
So that two hundred and forty additional, two hundred and forty thousand additional in salaries is, is for our, uh, the new officers that we've hired and things of that nature?
So if you look at the top line, that is the salaries for our officers, um, our full-time officers. Um, so that's the one point three six million. Um, you'll see part-time salaries under that for fifty thousand, staff salaries, and then, um, the salary for our chief. Um, so, uh, all of those lines, uh, pay for the department personnel we need for the police department.
Yeah, I was just noting the two hundred and forty thousand in the, the full-time salaries, uh, increase. And I assumed it was for.
Oh, okay.
That is in hopes that we have a full staff over there.
Well, exactly.
A full staff and not to mention, um, uh, we're currently, um, Lizzie Mills and I are currently in, uh, negotiations with both unions, um, for their new contracts, which will, um, hit this fiscal year budget. So, um, anticipating their, their requests would add to the bottom line. Mr. Al?
Yes, um, we're not gonna buy up a vehicle this year?
Um, I, it is, the chief and I are currently looking at twenty-twenty-five to get a new vehicle. So you'll most likely see that proposal come to you in December.
For a budget amendment.
For a budget amendment.
Alright.
Because one is available that we could get our hands on if this board is willing to, to do that now. But he requested one for twenty-twenty-six, um, because he's got the third sergeant.
This is the one that you're looking at now?
Correct, but we would move that up if we could. The more we can accomplish this year, I, you know, we're, we're trading fiscal years, but we, we save next year, cause obviously the cost increases.
Yep.
Any questions about the police department? Okay, so looking at the fire department, which is on page twenty-six. Um, no changes made here, but I don't know if supervisor or the treasurer, the clerk would like to speak to, um, your thoughts on the diesel filter system? Or where, or if you would like me to speak to that. Um, so one of the things we heard from our department assessment, um, from Greg Mariucci and, um.
Rich?
Rich, Rich Mariucci and Greg.
Flynn.
Flynn.
Flynn?
Uh, thank you. She is always my, my memory. Is that, um, we are lacking a, a, a air quality system down there and we're allowing diesel, uh, particles to get into the air that people in the office, um, and people that might be working out would be breathing. So that's a system that could cost up to a hundred thousand dollars to retrofit that building with. In this budget, uh, it can, is contained a, uh, a look at our buildings and grounds and what we could do to plan for the future, um, which may include, uh, a new police and fire building, a new fire building, an expanded fire building, or retrofitting the current building with that system to make it, um, the, the air quality safer. I think it was the desire of the finance committee, and if I speak incorrectly, please correct me, um, to do that. But they did not want to get out in front of those, uh, building assessments. So I think they, that is their desire to do that, but they're waiting for that recommendation to see what, um, our experts consult us with and recommend for us. So, but I think that is a desire, um, to make that a safer environment.
Could that now be a ask of Mr. Stink?
An ask or an act?
Ask.
Ask.
An ask of him.
A request of.
You had your bag to be signed in here.
Challenge to me is that to Karen's point, if, like, the recommendation is we need a new building or the, do we want to ask, spend our political chips on that and then immediately take it down? I mean, I, the way I would describe it, to be fair, Karen is more like that, was your recommendation and the finance committee agreed with it.
Okay.
To be fair to, to us, I think we all had some like, ugh, some real heartburn about it.
The person who came and gave us that overview told us to wait.
He did, yes.
Telling us to wait.
And to be fair, our chief told us very specifically not to wait. So that was very difficult for the three of us to sort of like parse that out. It feels.
Wait on what? I'm sorry. The air filter.
The air fil, the air mitigation system.
I've not been down there, but.
Because if you're sitting in the building. I, I get why you want it, but why would you wait?
Diesel trucks.
That's what he told us to the guy who came out.
That's okay. There's just a lot going on.
Because we could do something massively different with buildings and the floor plan of, or the footprint of the entire township. And so do you wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars into a building that theoretically you could tear down in a year? I don't think that's going to be the recommendation, but.
Okay. See, I thought he said wait on a new building is how I interpreted it. Maybe I just didn't pay close enough attention.
Wait on the assessment on whether that building is what we would go with for a longer period of time.
Is that in their written report?
Yes. It, it's, it's a really, um, I think crappy place to be.
It is.
Cause I hate the thought of like us knowing that this exists and not doing anything about it. But it also doesn't make sense necessarily to solve it in a way that may be solved a year from now.
But I, my concern is that if we don't put it in, we now have employees that are there full-time. You wanna hire a new, a new full-time admin person, they're gonna be sitting there in that fumes every day.
Your position is shifting as we speak.
So I, I, yeah, it is. I mean, the more I think about it, right?
I just wanna make sure we're on the same page that that's happening.
I think we need to do it and I don't think we should wait now.
So if we're waiting on the assessment, and what, what would the assessment have to say for this to have been a good wait?
That we need a whole new building.
Alright, so when would that happen?
Five to ten years, because we don't have the money for it.
No, I mean, it, the assessment process would take place probably in the spring, in the new year, probably first, second quarter. Um, so I think the, the retrofit.
Process says, this building is past its useful life, move on.
It may be that we still retrofit.
Years and years and years.
It may be that we retrofit something, correct.
So, I don't see a good rationale for not doing it.
I don't think there is a good rationale on, either way, like, I think there's arguments for and against. Yeah, and not like sort of throwing money away that went to not good use, or at least a year. But there are other ways to build the building that it, we wouldn't wait to save up, right? Like, cause they built this building and then they had a twenty-year bond on it. We ended up paying it off early. But they decided to build it, they built it, and then they bonded for it, so it was more immediate.
Takes at least a year to build it.
Yeah.
Two years, right?
I think she's saying there would be a solution needed in the, in the interim.
I understand what she's saying. I'm just making it clear that we wouldn't have to wait five to ten years to get a new building. We could, but we wouldn't have to.
Right, okay. And also, is this a system that could also be transferred into a new building?
It's possible that the retro.
Expertise now.
It's possible that it would be easier to retrofit a system into what we have now. Um, but that you would probably want a system to be.
Integrate something.
Integrates into the new building, so.
Yeah, the chief told us there was like a couple different systems in.
There is.
There's one that's, you know, the best, that is the most costly.
There's one you can put on the tailpipes. There's one that you can put into the building. It's, yeah, there's.
And realistically, I don't imagine us just not using that building. Maybe it becomes DPW, who also has diesel trucks and people, so.
Is the hundred thousand in this budget?
No, it's not.
Okay, you took it out.
Okay. We took measures this.
She didn't put it in.
I didn't put it in. We took measures to, we took measures to save money in the general fund.
Yes.
Um, but I did not put it into the fire department.
So there will be, um, six full-time employees down there, correct? Four full-time firefighters. She's, um, proposing a new full-time admin and then the chief.
Correct.
So that's what we're talking about.
I just feel like it would open us up to liability down the road if somebody had COPD or something and it was from this work environment and we were made aware of it.
To be fair, um, the chief is working on researching options to bring some options back to us. Um, he's currently on some medical leave right now, but it is not something we have halted work on. Um, but we are exploring those options that are available to us to, to, to retrofit.
So we could leave it out of the budget next year if he brings it to us. We could always do a budget amendment.
Correct.
Okay.
And it sounded like he was really working on it so that we could start doing something. And it sounded like he was really working on it so that we could start doing something if he could.
I guess I would say that right there. I mean, it's almost the end of November and December is when we have to approve this budget. And there's more work to be done in regards to ascertaining what we need and what we're gonna, what we're gonna get. So, I would suggest leaving it out.
So, my, my commitment to this board is that we will continue to work on it.
Definitely.
We will bring it to you probably in the new year, once we've had an opportunity to talk to companies in systems and bring options back to you to, both to proceed with the assessment and to possibly retrofit the system into the building.
To make a more educated judgment and decision.
Additional questions on the fire department?
Is that, is that consensus or?
Mr. Supervisor.
I know, Kate, you felt differently. Do you want to continue to push for that?
Uh, no, but I, I think I don't want to automatically just scrap it and say no.
Yeah.
I think we just need more information.
Yeah, I definitely, definitely not gonna scrap it, no. We're all in agreement on that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for the feedback. Additional questions on fire department?
No, no fire truck?
Um, so you do have the cost, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars cost of a new brush truck contained here in this budget. Two hundred and fifty, it's in the second to last line, vehicle replacement.
That's what the chief was asking.
Just above the twenty-eight. He's, so he's asked for a, a new chassis for the brush truck skid. And then to sell off, dispose of some equipment, so. And that varies a little, a little bit from the original ask from the team that put the budget together.
He was trying to be creative so he could get the most for-
What we needed.
Yeah, what we needed.
Definitely.
I've appreciated his expertise.
I saw that brush truck and I went, what's a brush truck? I figured that was what they used at the, at the crash scene.
So, sometimes it's that off-road, it's got a tank, it's got ca-, it's a caffs, some foam, compressed foam in it. So, yes, it's a, it's a modified fire truck, not using water.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to page-
Can I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to confirm we're all understanding the staffing changes and are supportive of that? Because that's a big-
In support of what?
The staffing changes? That's a fixed cost that will continue with us for a while.
So, that currently, you have two full-time, we are moving towards with the, we are not using the current funding. You'll see here, you're at about two sixty-one of the two seventy-five. With that increase, you would have two more additional full-time firefighters to staff nighttime shifts to protect the community. And I'm also proposing, in that, I'm sorry, I'll go back. That is in addition to the two current full-time people positions that usually staff daytime positions for the fire department. We have the benefit at this time of several people that are already full-time employees are allowed to go on priority one calls when the community needs it, which means if there's a structure fire or there's a priority one, heart, breathing, seizure, something of that nature, multiple employee, employees can respond during the day, so that's very helpful. I have proposed in this budget a new full-time admin position for the fire department, which I think is desperately needed.
We already talked about that.
Yeah, we talked about it a little bit. I just wanted, to be fair, the supervisor, pointing that out, that there are some new positions in this budget.
I thought when you had first proposed this, that there was savings in the department that you were bringing on the two new full-time people, but it looks like there isn't. Is that because of the plane crash cost?
Um, there's plane crash cost in addition to, there have been people that have been working additional time to cover. We have some people that are doing additional coverage. So, what you're seeing in shift work will be covered by people that are going to do full-time work.
Did we put a figure on that crash cost?
We have, both police and fire have put together reimbursement requests.
Is there, I was gonna say, is there a way to recoup that cost from entities?
Yes, either through the liability insurance for the plane, people that own the plane, or possibly from the state of Michigan.
And we're pursuing that?
We are.
Okay, good.
That money will roll back in the budget then?
Y- yes, but I'm gonna tell you that that process is not gonna move quickly.
It's insurance.
It could be, it could be next year.
Yeah, it won't roll into the budget, it'll just go into our account.
It'll probably go into the general fund.
Yeah.
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 Was there a ballpark on that?
The chief said when the congressman was here that it was over two hundred thousand.
So, that's fire-
Chief of the fire department, right.
And we just received chief martigans, if you give me one second, I can tell you what that is.
You could just swag it.
No, I can't because I, I don't remember.
And that's just-
I don't remember.
That's an all-in in like-
Yes.
Personnel, fuel-
Correct.
Equipment.
Yep, gear.
Materials.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's something that you have to do regularly when you're in that kind of a position.
Yeah, because didn't one of the vehicles, their gasoline or brake line got broken?
Fires.
Severed, yeah.
Yeah.
Fire department.
Yeah, email it, it's difficult.
They didn't use the brush truck, must be.
Okay.
Yeah, that's-
Probably less than two, I would think, for the police, but-
Pretty close because they had a-
They had a lot of personnel, I would imagine.
They did.
Because they had to do security around it until it cleared up.
But less, so, so fire was personnel and truck costs. The police department was more personnel cost.
So, will you, and I'm sorry if you said this and I missed it, I was just caught up in the numbers. Are, are you still planning to bring on the two new full-time firefighters this year? Or are you now proposing?
No.
So, we'll have to do a budget amendment?
One of them isn't scheduled to start until December first, so it's very possible that it won't hit the bottom line.
That might be okay with their-
Yeah, I mean, we're-
We don't have the other one identified.
Thirteen thousand dollars away from-
Yeah.
The budget.
Yeah.
So, it feels like-
Yeah, I've-
Just in normal costs, we're probably gonna hit the budget.
I've indicated in my budget amendment so that the fire department and the police department are, obviously, both salary benefits are all items to watch, so.
Okay.
Yes, but I, I don't know where yet.
And I did ask the question, is there enough, is there enough items to do to have two more fire, full-time firefighters this year when we've only had two, and then add two more, and then to add the new admin assistant? And, um, I was told yes, so-
I have some breakdowns that the chief sent. I asked him to try to quantify it.
Right, right.
Um, so I'm happy to share that with you all right now.
We understand that, um, we want it covered down there. We don't want just one person going out, we want two. But we want to make sure that it's, it's covered, that there's enough stuff to do.
Ideally, to do what they do at the police department to cover shifts, two-on, two-off, you should have eight. You have half that. So, really, when, right now, you have one-on, one-off, one-on, one-off day, and then one-on, one-off, one-on, one-off night. Plus, the paid-on calls coming in to assist, which I will tell you, once you start adding full-time employees, paid-on calls don't generally want to respond when they know there's already somebody at the station.
The chief said ten to fifteen percent of their time is station duties. That's cleaning bathrooms, training area, kitchen, laundry, other chores seasonally. Ten to fifteen percent of their time is rig checks, EMS supply, stocked, SCBA inspections.
That's their breathing apparatus.
Power tools and saws in working order, fuel levels up, emergency lights, fluid levels, tool in inventory. Fifteen to twenty percent meals and breaks, depending on time of shift. Thirty-five to forty percent will be the average amount of time on calls and writing patient care reports. If we only continue to have fifteen hundred calls per year, as that number rises, so will the amount of time spent. Fifteen to twenty percent on training, ten percent on physical readiness, which leaves very little time for downtime for administrative tasks, is what he's saying here. But I think, I think what is important, I, I'm not, not in support of this, to be clear, but I think we all have to go into this with our wi-, eyes wide open. If we add full-time staff now, we're basically committing ourselves to finding more revenue next year. Or we then come back and we lay these people off. So, like, the, the option to cut becomes harder when we're adding new staff in this short period of time. And, and I'm okay with new revenue, but if you're thinking like, actually, my preference next year will be to cut, we, we're backing ourselves into a corner where real people's lives are sort of affected by that decision. So, if you're thinking right now, what I'd rather do is cut than add new revenue, I think we should have a conversation about these new people right now. Because I think that's just not a great, that's not a fair thing for us to do, is hire them in December and then give them a year and eliminate the positions.
I don't think that would be an option.
That's why I'm, I just want to point that out.
As you mentioned, are you going to bring us options for revenue?
Well, we were pitching, that I just mentioned, was that each meeting, we would cover a different revenue item.
Between now and?
Not now, no, starting in the new year, between the new year and then the budget timeframe, because we'd have to decide on new revenue for the budget.
So, like, for a year from now?
Well, you'll be, we'll want to know our decisions by, what, September because-
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We need to inform Karen so she could build it into the budget, and then we could do whatever we need to do, whether that's voting or, you know, get those things in order. But what I had said just a moment ago is another option is to cut our way there.
Right.
And that's still true if we do this, but again, I just want to draw attention. We're hiring people and then cutting immediately, that's not a good way to treat people.
You could say, no, don't hire the new admin, and the four current full-timers can try to do the admin job for the year. You know?
Is that what they do now?
No.
Who does the admin now? The chief?
Your chief?
Hundred percent?
No.
No, there's some time of April that is going into this.
Oh, okay.
I assume she's compensated for that?
She is, but it was, it was done in the interim because basically, your chief could go on calls and do reports, and that's all your chief would do. And I didn't think that was appropriate for your fire chief, um, to be spending their time that way when leading the department into the future is really what you're requiring and asking of your, of your chief.
So, I'm good with moving on, I just wanted to point that out to folks that-
And, and to, and I appreciate that from you, but I, I build this with also the strategic plan and the fact that this is statutorily required. I mean, those are the things that go into my recommendation to you, is that it is, while it is one of the most expensive things, things you're required to do, I think that's where this, this community places a lot of importance from, uh, police and fire. And I think we all recognize that fire has been lacking, and in order to bring it up, this is where I've placed the emphasis. So, it is great for you guys to have that conversation.
We're never gonna get smaller. There's never gonna be less fires or rescues. Unfortunately, I think we need to plan for that.
Don't disagree?
If everyone else is ready, we can-
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Moving on to page thirty, you have the cemetery fund. What you have at the top of the page is the estimated revenues. I will point out earlier this year, thanks to our planner, Miles Robler, you, and with your approval of his proposal, you increased the fees. That is not shown here. The estimates that I used were based on this year's sales, but you will in fact bring in most likely more because those fees have increased, which means you'll use less of your fund balance for the expenditures. And as you can see at the bottom of the page, about forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand dollars in expenditures is used to maintain both of the cemeteries that the township currently has. Moving on to page thirty-two, you have the senior center. There is at the top of the page, the revenue that we expect to bring in, the meal cost. Should bring in approximately fifty thousand dollars. Some other rent and other revenue is indicated there, but the major amount operating transfer in is that general fund transfer of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for a total of a hundred and sixty-six expenditures. At the bottom of the page, you can see that the four part-time employees are a significant amount of that budget, almost half, in addition to the food expense, for a total of about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in expenses for that department.
When we were reviewing the, what part, started as a parking study, but turned into a full-scale analysis of the senior center.
Thanks, Miles.
Much appreciated. I think one item that came up for future discussion at the time was the senior center meal prices and how that is set up, and I think we had sort of tabled it to the budget time. Would now be the time to start talking about reassessing that.
So, your deputy superintendent who manages that department with the parks and rec coordinator has proposed both some meal price increases, both for resident and non-resident, in addition to a, I would call it a non-resident fee. I have those on my desk, I have not had a chance to look at those yet to, to be able to plan, talk to staff, and then, um, plan for those increases. But that is something that we're currently looking at, and because it's operation, I know this group has voted on it in the past. I don't think it requires a vote of this body because it's operational. But it will be something that we will, could keep you informed of as we move forward with those changes. Cool.
So, that's not in here?
It's not reflected here.
What are, what is this proposed to do? Like, how many days a week in the cost?
It's, uh, three days a week, the same as it is now, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, with the four part-time employees that we currently have. And then James is time, James is our parks and rec coordinator, directing oper-, directing operations over there. Programming, thank you. Is he there three days a week?
He's only there for programming.
Programming, okay.
And then the cost of the meals, you're proposing to be the same as it is right now?
As written here, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
I just want to be really transparent about what this is saying. Three days a week, meals staying the same.
Yep.
So, there could potentially be more revenue.
But we have more thoughts on revenue.
Some changes. John Reich, John Reich and I have talked about, he knew of some senior centers that actually have a membership, and that's a revenue gain, you know?
Yeah.
So, I just wondered if, we were thinking about that or something of that nature?
That's one of the things that Taylor has proposed, is a, 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 a membership fee that would maybe offset the, the non-resident rate for meals. But either way, you either have to collect it in a meal cost or in a membership cost. So, we're looking at the ways in which we can do that.
Good, thank you.
More effectively.
Thank you, Taylor. She's pretty quiet back there, but she does a lot of work.
She does a lot of work. Questions on that? Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Supervisor. Moving on to the farmer's market on page thirty-three. This also has a fund balance and supports itself. You will note, we've had some conversations throughout this year that some of our vending, I think, has been down. At this time, now that the market is closed, we brought in approximately thirteen hundred thirty dollars. We were scheduled for about fifteen hundred. The other revenue in would be the transfer in from the fund balance. So, the market is actually doing pretty well at this point. I don't know where the, calculate the totals at the bottom went, my apologies, we'll fix that. But propose to do about the same thing. Next year, rent and the other revenue would be supporting itself from the fund balance, and then minimal expenses in operating supplies.
The total's on the next page.
Oh, there it is, okay. I don't know why that did that, but thank you. So, in addition to that, some printing and publishing miscellaneous, but no changes from the finance committee.
Bank transaction fees, a thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Why do banks do that?
Because they're banks. Moving on to page thirty-five, this is Bath Fest. I will point out to you that the budget amendment that is in your packet that was already approved by you earlier this year is not reflected in the transfer in from the general fund. So, some of these numbers in- Um, so some of these numbers, uh, in especially the revenues, um, are not reflected accurately. Um, but they will, uh, have, uh, revenue coming in, they've projected for about twenty-seven fifty, uh, and expenditures of approximately sixty-eight hundred dollars. And no changes from the finance committee, from my recommendation. Any questions on that?
Expenditures are sixty-eight hundred and they brought in twenty-seven fifty.
Um, there, it, that's a new revenue, so they do have some revenue left over from this year, um, so that will continue to seed that, that fund.
And we-
You approved ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand, that was what it was, okay.
In all of the other budgets you've listed that, is there a reason it's not listed in this one?
Um, because it is, the, the actual transfer has not occurred yet, so I cannot modify that here.
No, I'm talking about for next year.
Um, it's because the current one isn't in, so.
The current?
The current budget amendment, so, I mean, I, we could do the math, but, um, at this time, I mean, they've spent seventy-two hundred, they brought in fourteen, so they have like seven thousand dollars at this time, so.
Right, but that doesn't actually matter, all we need to know is that there's a difference between sixty-eight hundred and so, two thousand seven hundred fifty. The difference between that needs to be listed as part of the revenue.
Correct. I will fix that.
You can't even open up the line unless you've moved it this year?
Um, I can't make modifications to BSNA, only the accountant or the treasurer can do that, so, I mean, I can change it in my spreadsheet, but it's not reflected in, in the accounting program currently.
But what you're asking us to approve is that?
Yes.
The difference between those two numbers?
I will fix that for your next-
Okay.
Budget draft. But that's why it wasn't done here, is, is what I'm offering.
Is one of those things gonna be that many less? Building permits, huh?
Um, Miles didn't calculate this, I did.
Oh, you did?
Mm-hmm.
What, how do you, how do you?
Um, so I take a look at this year, um, and historically, uh, what is happening, Miles and I talk about the economy. And what's happening out in the world.
He's very good at that.
He is very good at that, he has a tremendous amount of expertise in that area. Um, but yeah, so it, um, but there's also part of that is that it's an AGS fee that we pay out of consulting. Um, you'll see that in contractual and professional, um, services, um, is a part of that, we retain some of those fees and then we pay, um, AGS for their, um, management of the department.
Good. I hope we're surprised.
It's a guessing game.
Exactly.
There are years I thought it would be a banner year and it's been sad, um, but-
Budgeting?
But knowing, knowing what we have coming in as far as, um, what's happening near Gary Lane, what's happening over, um, off Marsh Road, um, we're confident that we have at least residential. So.
Yeah, SGI.
So.
The other one, yeah, I was trying to think of the other one, thank you.
You're welcome. Um. So any questions about the building depart- or, excuse me, building and zoning? It's the building department, but it's also, um, the planning staff.
I don't have a question, but I did wanna reiterate my comment that I made in the finance committee. I have a lot of concern about this budget, we're subsidizing it by a hundred thirty-seven thousand. Luckily, there's a fund balance here to use it, but if there wasn't a fund balance, we'd be operating transfer in from the general fund. And so the math is not mathing in this department. And Karen indicated she knows that and it's, this is part of our long-term-
So what we're looking at is a, is a new fee structure, um, and it will, uh, unfortunately with AGS, the fees hasn't, haven't kept, um, time with the economy, um, they've been changed intermittently. Um, what you're going to have as we move forward is I, uh, ICC rates, um, that we will hopefully implement on a yearly basis so that our fees are going up, um, as all things go up, um, and that we-
It's the same problem we've had with all of our other stuff.
Fees, yes, fees are just not updated.
Sewer.
Correct, correct, so you will see an increase in revenue because those fees have not been updated, I think, since twenty nineteen.
Are there gonna be new fees at the beginning of the year or will it be?
Um, we're currently working through some of that, um, to look at the, to the fee schedule. Um, and part of it is it's just not all apples to apples, um, so it's kind of the assessor and I working through and, and, and again, estimating, um, what we think will be the new, um, what we, what revenue would result from those new fees. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, moving on to page thirty-eight, if there are no questions, uh, you have the drug forfeiture fund, um, and this is a, uh, police department fund, obviously that brings in revenue and has expenditures, um, from money seized for drug-related crimes to support law enforcement. Um, not a, not a huge amount here, uh, but what you have is fines and forfeits of a thousand dollars. Uh, other revenue is the, um, fund balance that it carries. Um, and then the, uh, planned expenditure is a thermal night vision scope, um, that the chief, uh, is planning for next year.
So that's kind of a portion, isn't it?
Yeah.
Five thousand, five thousand?
Yep. Uh, moving to page forty, police training, uh, these are revenues, uh, that we receive as part of our, uh-
Wait, where'd you go? Forty, page forty?
Page forty?
I think you missed thirty-nine, I think you missed the library fund.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's the library.
Oh, I'm sorry, library fund on page thirty-nine, um, sorry, some of these pages are, um, front back and I completely skipped over to the library fund. Um, so the library fund is a, is more of a pass-through, uh, account. Uh, you have the millage that the library, the bath voters currently have approved, that comes into the township collected by the treasurer and then is paid out to the library for their program costs.
And something's off there.
I know, that's why I said I gotta look into it, I was just like, I circled that, I'm like, why is it doubled?
Yeah.
Why is?
Why is it negative and why is it doubled?
Yeah.
I didn't wanna say that.
She gets to solve that mystery.
I get to look into that.
So we just put a big question mark on that?
I'll look into it, I'll figure it out.
All right.
This is where Jennifer and I work together really well. We, I find it and she gets to solve it. Uh, moving on to page forty now, uh, police training, um, so no employees in this department, is money we receive for each officer that we have. Um, so twelve thousand dollars from the state and then money we use for instructors for mental health, autism, legal issues, et cetera. So twelve in, twelve out. Questions?
Just a general question, uh, training, you expect to do that much more training in twenty twenty-six than you did in twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, so the amounts actually are going up to, um, this is, uh, the new per officer amount, um, gives us significantly more. Um, and our, and our department, uh, is fantastic at, um, their continuing education and making sure they're ready to meet the needs of our community. So yes, um, I would anticipate that they would train that much.
I like this new process. Finance committee, then we do go over that.
Sure.
It helps.
Moving on to the auto theft, uh, fund on page forty-one, thank you for your patience, we're almost there. Um, this is, um, there, this is twofold, um, this is a fund that's related to, uh, trying to prevent motor vehicle theft, uh, and prevent, prevent and deal with it, um, with the, the, sorry, the township also has a program, uh, which is, uh, staffed by Officer Marcus Seidelberg, where he inspects, uh, vehicles here at the township, we have a lift, um, in the DP, TPW, I'm sorry, my words are, uh, the DPW garage, um, when vehicles are totaled, um, and are trying to be made road-ready again, um, he actually does that inspection. Here at the township, we charge for that. Um, we are hoping to, or I should say the chief is hoping to trade another officer to do those inspections. We found out the hard way this year that when Marcus is gone, we can't do those inspections and that we should do some cross-training. Um, but it also helps, uh, offset the cost of rifles, other equipment, and then drug testing kits as well. So this also carries a, uh, healthy fund balance, um, but you're proposed for, um, twenty-seven hundred in revenue from inspection fees, um, fund balance, money used, and then another ten thousand for, um, training a new officer to do those inspections and any equipment they might need. Moving to page forty-two, capital outlay, um, this has, uh, has had, um, some money in it, thirty-four thousand, four hundred eight dollars and ninety-five cents, which should be used for the acquisition, construction, renovation and maintenance of facilities and land. Um, and this is where initially we had the Park Lake Nature Trail, um, funding for that. So that money kind of lives in that account and, uh, I have currently scheduled it for the Park Lake Nature Trail.
And that was an, that was the one that was initially fifty thousand?
Correct.
And then, okay.
Yeah, we used it when we did the closing on the property transfer from the, um, drain commissioner.
Right.
That is a change from the finance committee. What happened there?
Well, it's always been in there.
No, the three of us agreed that that would be moved this year.
Yeah, we did.
I missed it.
It was your idea, my friend.
Still missed it?
So where are you moving it to?
The proposal was to offset the, uh, use of, uh, the fund balance dollars for other dollars in the budget elsewhere, just to like-
So we should just cross that bottom line out again?
That is correct, you, uh, I forgot, we talked about in the adoption resolution.
I just wanna make sure we're-
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry.
We're on the same page for what's happening to those dollars.
I just missed it.
That's still your intent?
Um-
To zero that out?
So we can use it, cause we're in the red so much.
Correct. All right, moving on to the sewer fund, um, this is a self-supporting fund. Um, the large dollar amounts, um, generated from both user fees as well as where a lot of the high-dollar projects are paid out of. Um, you'll see on page forty-three, the estimated revenues, um, are from the user fees, the charges for sewer, or sewer charges for services is the REU fee that each homeowner on the sewer system pays. Um, late fees, uh, are significant, uh, thirty thousand dollars in this fund. Um, tap-in fees, uh, is an amount when a new home attaches to the system, those are fees that we collect from, um, the builder or the homeowner. Um, and then interest, uh, on the money invested by the township treasurer at approximately two point five million being brought in. Next down is the sewer administration, uh, you have here printing and po- or, excuse me, printing and publishing and postage is for the sewer bills that we, um, print and send from this office for those that are on the sewer system. Sewer operations, uh, you will have here contractual and professional services, and this is generally, um, cost for Prime and Newhoff, our engineer, which advises us on the operation of our sewer system. Uh, and then a transfer to the general fund of seventy-five thousand, and this is for the front office and treasurer's time, um, to handle sewer billing, sewer payments and any other thing else that needs to be done, investments. Um, so that actually pays into the general fund, that amount, I have increased that, um, in my time being here, I don't think that amount has ever changed. I would like to do an analysis on that and, um, see if that is the amount, um, that actually is needed to the general fund. Different municipalities do it differently, some people do that workflow analysis and see how much time is dedicated. Um, I can't recall if it's the city of Dewitt or the Dewitt Township just charges the, um, salary of the township treasurer, that's what they collect and pay back to the, um, general fund. Um, but I will explore the different ways that we can recoup some of those costs for the time we spend doing sewer operations. Yes, Mr. Al?
Uh, I see the interest is, you recommended twenty-five thousand. The finance committee has recommended forty.
Yes.
What is, what is the difference? I mean, why?
I increased it due to the fact that the interest rates are locked in right now for twenty twenty-six almost, for all those investments that I have, so.
So Karen was just low was all.
So when we started the process, Jennifer had indicated the rates weren't coming back as good for investments and by the time we met with the finance committee, she felt more confident in the money that could be returned.
What you can't see on this new document either is the other years that we were shown and we were above forty on each of the previous years. So like the historical data was also telling us it was likely to be more.
Okay.
Did we ever revise the sewer tap-in fees? I remember reading a study-
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we didn't remember if we ever-
One of Miles's major projects this year as well.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't remember, I knew it was part of it.
We did, we did that.
Okay.
It was good work, though, Miles.
Senior Center, sewer.
We did a lot.
Cemetery.
Well, I feel like being on the planning commission, so many, it happens there.
He's hilarious, that's why I can't remember.
So much, and then I can't remember if it actually makes it, it's where, here or not, yeah.
Um, the only other thing on this is, um-
Which page, Jennifer?
No, I just was gonna say that we need to increase the quarterly fee for residents.
We do, um, so we, we increased that amount, I think, in June for July, um, for the July billing. Um, so it is my intention to bring that to you probably in the first quarter, if not in December. Um, but that's some look that staff and I need to do to take a look at what that next, um, increment would be.
Is it, it's not the same then every year?
No, we actually have, uh, a study conducted, um, we had it done by Baker Tilly. Um, they study the sewer rates and the, due to the work that needs to be done, the work that has been done, um, and work that we need to do for maintenance and repair, they come up with an amount that they recommend that you adopt, um, on a, on a regular basis um, of at least yearly. Um, so we, it, in the past, it's been a dollar, um, the last increase was, I think, five dollars.
Five eighty-three, we went from one fourteen fourteen up to the hundred and twenty.
But we chose that without the-
But we didn't do an increase for what, two years?
Yeah.
Cause we were having the rate study done at that point in time, so.
Correct.
So theoretically it could be doubled this year then, or this, this period?
Yeah, we're gonna have to increase it somehow.
The rate study calls for us to massively grow this, so, uh, our contention is that the rate study is not correct and we need to change it.
Go back.
So like that is what I understand Karen's doing with Baker Tilly, it's counting work that we would not do, it's counting bonding that we might not do. So like the rate is like two hundred fifty dollars or something that they've come up with, so.
Increase?
A quarter.
Up two.
Two, total.
Quarter. Per quarter.
And we're like, no, that's not-
So five hundred dollars a year per?
No, four, four quarters, a thousand dollars.
A thousand dollars.
Quarters are fours, so.
Per, per, uh, paying customer.
And we didn't like that.
Well, for the non-paying customers, that's what they are.
I think I'll go back to a sewer system or a, uh-
A well, a septic?
No, a septic system, yeah.
That's what I have, so.
I have.
But like, there's work that has to be done there, which is part of what's gonna take us time and why we can't shift the rate now.
Yeah, within the next probably month, two, three, four months, we'll bring forth the bond stuff we have to do.
I was just gonna say, is that the bond, thought we had, yeah?
Yep.
So, we'll have that too.
Are we keeping the trailer park up with us?
We did, so we, we made that improvement last time, um, we, yep, they're paying it as well, beginning, starting with July first of twenty twenty-five. So yes, anything going forward, um, we'll be increasing theirs as well.
And we got no complaint from them when we sent them the letters that stated this is what you now owe.
What you might when you go to two fifty.
Well, we're going to-
Don't scare people out.
Going to that out.
When you do the study for the, however you decide to do it, the time spent for admin, that's something that we can do at the same time for the other funds that we're pulling admin funds out of.
Correct, um, cemeteries is a, a huge one, that DPW spends a great deal of time, they're, they're the primary, um, employees that work in the cemeteries. Um, but also like fuel is used by them, so yes, like that is something that should be done for other funds as well.
Cause I think what Brad was telling us is that we just need to have it documented that-
Yeah, there needs to be a process with a method, correct. But determining what that method is, is where I need to spend some time. Um, the, the cost that you see for the sewer treatment plant, um, is the, uh, one point seven million dollars. There will be, as Brad explained to you, Brad Gersky, the director of SCUMA when he came, that is the cost. We, we spend about a hundred and forty-two thousand each month, which is an increase over last year of about eight thousand a month. Um, is for the increased capacity and the increased treatment of sewage that flows to the plant. Um, so that's what we pay SCUMA to process, um, the sewage that- So that's what we pay SCUMA to process, um, the sewage that comes from our community.
So if we do a bond, will that help hold sewer charges down? Or will it just be for building out the new?
It wouldn't even be necessarily for building out, it would be for the lining that needs to take place, maintenance. The equalization, uh, basin that's needed on Drumheller Road would, um, increase the capacity of the system and help us with peak flow usage, which we pay a prime rate when we send everything over at once. If we could hold it and release it on off-peak times, um, we would do better with our system. But it's, it's improvements to the system, but no, it would probably increase some of the costs.
You remember that video I showed you of that li- lining?
Yeah.
That was pretty cool.
It is cool. It's a, it's a, it's a, an amazing process. Um, and then what you have at the bottom of page forty-five is the current debt repayment that we have paying off bonds that we've done in the past. So about a four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year in bond payments. Moving on to page forty-six, second to last page, you're almost there, uh, is the, uh, water fund, which has a very healthy fund balance, um, which we will, uh, figure out how to use some of that funding this year to offset some of our costs. So when a new home comes on that's on BWL Water Service, um, they pay a fee to the Township, we pay BWL, uh, and then we use some of that as well to transfer to the general fund. I increased that amount as well, um, but it's pretty simple. Uh, last but not least is streetlights. There is an assessment on many, uh, tax bills in the Township for streetlights that service your home. If you live in a, in a subdivision or, uh, someplace with a lighting district, those often come to this body, um, for approval from, um, consumers. You might have seen one, I think that we've had a couple in this past year. So the ninety thousand is what is assessed, the assessor and I worked together on this number, and then, um, the amount, uh, varies. Obviously, you can see the year-to-date amount is seventy-six-five, uh, in payments to consumer from the Township. So next year is approximated to be ninety in and ninety to consumers.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Then there you have it. Um, thoughts, questions, concerns? I know that was a lot to go through, uh, all in one evening. I concur with, uh, whoever said it here, it is, uh, a preferred way to dig into this budget. I know that it probably, um, leaves some people, trustees, feeling like they haven't, they don't have as much, um, input. But, um, I think the work that we do to get where we end up, uh, for a public hearing and for this body to take a look at it is helpful. But, um, if anybody wants to spend more time on it, I am available to you, um, or if you leave here tonight and have questions, uh, before the public hearing, I am available to you as well.
Lots of glassy eyes.
Are we feeling okay about the budget presentation? Now would be the best, now, when, between now and the next meeting would be the best time to give feedback.
As they say, it is what it is, and, you know, unfortunately, me personally, I'm not happy with having to get rid of those funds that were once looked at as, I won't use the A-word at all, you know, and, uh, anyway, I hear you, I understand.
All right, that brings us to items for action. The first is the personnel policy. We have the Deputy Superintendent here.
Please don't I try to give her my chair, she'd.
She'll stay up there.
Good evening. Um, so you all received an email from me, um, last week reminding you that you had any questions to email me and Attorney Mills, since she would not be here tonight. I only received one question, I did provide an explanation for that, um, so unless there aren't, unless there are any questions, um.
Was that answer in regards to my question?
Yes.
I must not have read my, my company email because I didn't see your answer.
Yes, I provided you with an answer on Friday morning.
Okay.
Last time I had asked Attorney Mills, like, what should I really look at if I don't read the whole thing? And she said review sick leave, and I read through it, and I, what should have, is there anything that should have jumped out to me? Or is it significantly different? I guess I don't know what the current one is, so.
Sure, so I would say one of the biggest things is with the new sick leave law that went into effect from Michigan.
Okay.
Um, so that was mostly bringing it into compliance with that. Additionally, we did, um, we changed how, um, employees receive sick time. So currently, um, we are receiving it just at the beginning of the month. Legal counsel has recommended that we receive it per pay period, so splitting that up. Um, it's also changed based on what your, um, normal work shift is. So if you work an eight-hour shift, a ten-hour shift, or a twelve-hour shift, you receive the equivalent amount. And then as well, uh, our current sick leave bank, you can earn up to nine hundred and sixty hours, um, which is significant. So we have lessened that, um, I don't remember the exact amount.
Five hundred and sixty, I think sixty.
Yes, thank you, five hundred and sixty, um, and then the payout amount would be half of that. Just for your all information, I did do a brief search of everybody's bank, and there are only two individuals that are currently over the five hundred and sixty. And they're not above it significantly.
So how do we handle that?
So we, Superintendent and I have discussed that, so we would discuss how, um, if we would either request that they use it, if they could move it into a healthcare savings account, um, for retirement healthcare. There are different avenues that we could do to work through that with.
Transfer it to, um, vacation time is another, is another way to do it, so we'll, we'll work with the two hundred.
But then they're gonna be in a situation where, I mean, they have to do just more than what their overage is because they're gonna be continually earning it, right?
No, it's, uh. Yes, so we would have a.
Oh, they just couldn't earn it anymore?
Yes, so there will, there will be a cap, um, that we'll be able to do within our payroll system, that once you get to five sixty, then you would stop accrue.
Okay.
I'm still at odds with that wording. I mean, we're mammals. We don't, we, that's how you feed is from breasts, not chests. It's just.
Ray, no one has any context for what you're talking about?
Okay, the context was that in the manual, it states chest feeding. And prima facie, that sounds like zombies. And irrespective of the gender inclusivity, you're gonna feed a baby out of a breast, no matter what it is. And that's the way it's been for ten thousand years, not chests, but breasts. And I just, I don't think it's, uh, I mean, it's the, the way it is going now, but I just don't think that's appropriate. I think it's a misuse of the gender in, uh, exclusivity, or inclusivity, excuse me.
I think we're probably the wrong group to fight that fight.
Well, whoever's doing this is up to us, I would think.
I believe Attorney Mills talked about that the last meeting when she was here, why they put that word in there.
I can't remember if that, she did talk about it.
She did, she stood right up there and talked about it, yeah.
Okay. Well, that doesn't mean it make it right, though.
But that is the law, I mean, those are the words they're using now.
No, it's not the law.
Those are the words they're using now.
Okay.
To include everybody. You could be a male and decide to put one of those machines on and nurture a child.
I'm a male, I'm a male, and what do I have?
You can nurse a child with those new gadgets they have out there.
I have man breasts.
Doesn't matter.
They show through my T-shirt.
You're being, you're not being inclusive, so.
No, I am. Anyway, okay, I just wanted to make it clear beyond the shadow of doubt.
What was the other question that she told you to look at?
That was it, uh, just said review sick leave, and so I think you answered my question. I guess, I mean, you'll have to have some sort of plan for the people who, who will be affected by it.
Yeah.
Something reasonable, but.
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
Any other questions?
So after we vote on this, if we, if it is approved, will it go into effect January first?
Yes, so, um, as part of, um, if there is a motion tonight to approve this, I would ask that you include that in your motion for it to go into effect on January first.
And everybody would need to, uh, read this, which they already should have, and then sign that last sheet?
Yes, as Attorney Mills, um, talked about at the last meeting, we do request that employees, um, sign the acknowledgement, the acknowledgement form. Obviously, we can't require them to do so, so if someone is vehemently against doing that, we would just write on that form that they did receive the document and that they refused to sign it.
Okay.
What page is that on?
Fifty-eight is the form, the acknowledgement form.
And I, I will also reiterate that it's just acknowledging that they have read it, it's not saying that they agree with what is involved.
I actually think that was in the last personnel policy also, correct?
It, it was, um, I believe the wording changed slightly, but it was pretty much the same.
Okay. Fifty-eight, I'm sorry, fifty-eight and then forty-eight, and, yep, there you go.
So what was the previous sick time payout?
Um, so it was half of the nine sixty.
Okay, so that is.
Yeah, it was significant, which obviously is a significant liability on the Township.
I would offer before, um, any motions made tonight, that, um, the Deputy Superintendent has solely worked on this project, um, with, uh, legal counsel, it has been a, dare I say, a labor of love. It changed frequently as laws changed, as, uh, esta fiesta, which, uh, legal counsel, uh, tried to, um, frame this as a party. But it made a, a tough topic a little bit more palatable, but, um, it, it, you received this, I think, three weeks ago, and it had changed just a week prior. So this, this is a document that we will keep a close eye on and will come back to you, um, if not annually. We'll determine a period in time in which to update the document, um, and not let it be so out of date as it was this time. So we appreciate your, um, cooperation and thank you for walking through the process with us.
What is the pleasure of the board on this proposed new personnel policy?
I move we accept it.
I'm sorry?
I move we accept it.
Do you have a start date that you'd like to add to that motion?
January first.
First of the year.
What year? What year?
The next one, the next one, he said.
Twenty-six.
There you go.
A second. Who got it?
Doesn't matter.
She did.
All right, we have a motion in a second to, uh, approve the new personnel policy, starting with the January first, twenty-twenty-six start date. Is there any further discussion, questions? What?
You keep.
Our signed copy. I think that's for you.
Why did I have to sign it then?
I don't know that you did have to sign it.
Well, you just said I, you.
Employees.
The employees have to sign it.
We get a W two, right?
We don't have to.
I mean, you're an elected official.
You are not beholden to the personnel policy.
The personnel policy doesn't, doesn't pertain to elected officials.
I'm an employee, I work here.
If you wanna give me your signed copy, I would be happy to do it.
You're not getting sick time, no. We don't get sick time, we don't get payout time.
We want a ten ninety-nine then.
You, you deal with that with HR. All right, we've got a motion in a second, it sounds like there's an irrelevant conversation after that, we'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Katkey?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes.
All right. Congratulations, thanks for all that hard work. That brings us to item thirteen, Large B, Small B, Resolution twenty-twenty-five fourteen, to establish an investment policy brought to us by the Treasurer.
Thank you. Are there any questions in regards to what we talked about two weeks ago? And let you know, Ray, I did add Bank of America on there.
I was just wondering.
Like, still, I don't have a contact there, so.
I'm just thinking maybe you don't go to Frando anymore, so.
I do not.
Best Mexican restaurant in the world is right across from.
So are there any questions or concerns? I mean, basically, it's straightforward, it's our, you know, it's what is legally needed for Act twenty for the Treasurer to be able to do investments.
That's a, that's a statutory thing.
Mm-hmm.
Would anyone like to move forward the resolution?
I'll make the resolution.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve Res- Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen, as submitted.
I'll second.
Doesn't matter.
We have a motion in a second, is there further discussion about the investment policy? Hearing none, we'll do another roll call vote.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Katkey?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes as well. That brings us to new business, items for introduction and discussion. We've got a couple of things from, uh, the planner, and then some budget amendments, and then the health insurance piece. We do need to get to the health insurance piece tonight, so if you could be as brief but thorough as possible.
But also, thank you for your patience.
No, a lot of this conversation depends on you guys, so.
It's not a good sign, Miles.
Yep. So, uh, before you tonight is a memo, uh, from the Planning Department. I'd like to say, you know, this is an effort for transparency, and a part of it is, but also it's an effort for me and my staff not spend six months doing something that ultimately will be for not. So, uh, we're coming to you tonight to try to get your feedback regarding three major, uh, questions we have. If we were to move forward with creating regulations and standards as it relates to the land use of long-term rentals. To be clear, that excludes, uh, something we previously talked to the board about, which is short-term rentals. Long-term rentals would be defined, but, uh, in lieu of that definition in front of us, what we're working with is a working definition of like thirty days or more. So we're talking about apartment complexes, we're talking about somebody that rents a single-family home for a year contract with the landlord. Rent, rental in that context. The first question is, um, is the board have an interest in regulating this, uh, use of land and dwellings within the community? If that question, i- if the answer to that question is yes, uh, then there becomes two follow-up questions, which is, right, if we know we want to regulate, who do we wanna regulate? The answer to that can be single-family homes through commercial, larger commercial apartment complexes, or the answer could be, you know, commercial-only dwelling units above this size, entities with dwelling units above this size. The second follow-up question is, how should we regulate those? So that usually takes the form of, you know, a- anywhere between annual inspections for all dwelling units to, uh, biannual to every three years and, um, up from there, obviously. So I really don't need a hard answer on the last two, that's maybe a working conversation we can have over time. I do, however, need a harder answer on, should we move forward with this? And if the answer to that is yes, then myself and other Township staff, obviously in coordination with administration, their staff and, uh, obviously legal counsel as well, will start moving forward with looking at this ordinance, which, to be clear, will impact people's lives in the Township.
Can you tell me again why you're bringing this? I mean, what, what happened in the community that brought you, made you bring this to the board?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. There have been a couple catalyst events that have required, uh, this to come to the attention of the board tonight. Some of those have been more public than others. I think everyone is aware that as the apartments on Chandler Road continuously change hands, some of the entities that have become the owners of those apartments have been better over the years and some have been worse. So that's been a struggle, this would give us tools in our toolbox to deal with, uh, entities that choose not to uphold the standards of the community or, you know, the standards of people living there, um, or what they expect the standards to be. And then the, maybe still kind of public but less on people's radar is the single-family home. If, I almost hesitate to bring up the community Facebook page, but if you frequent the community Facebook page over the last year, you have seen, uh, or likely to have seen, you know, statements about the state of rental uni- single-family home rental units in the Township. Those complaints often make their way back to planning and building. We have to administer and, you know, figure out if those are complaints are actionable from staff and, you know, talk to the people making the complaints and, um, there's been some willingness at the Planning Commission too on a macro, more of a macro scale, what's the future vision of the Township and what the states of some of our rentals are in different corridors and how that affects the vision of the Township. This would also put tools in that toolbox to incentivize corridor. This would also put tools in that toolbox to incentivize corridors to kind of fit that community character that's been envisioned by the planning commission via the comprehensive plans currently adopted and, you know, currently being discussed. That was the long answer.
Thank you.
Question? Do you have recommendations?
I mean, I'm a planner by trade, so if I didn't think there was value in land use policy, then I wouldn't be doing this job. So I obviously think there's value in land use policy.
I can share some of our conversations from the planning commission. I think the discussion originated sort of from that safety context. How, and should we and how should we ensure that the places that people have to rent are meeting a minimum safety standard? Is that a guideline that we feel is important to enforce in the community? And how often and how much? But, you know, we're obviously surrounded by a lot of communities that pretty strictly enforce rental inspections. And so is that driving some of the?
Bad actors.
Thank you. Bad actors out of those communities into our community because they know there isn't much oversight on the properties that they're maintaining, creating potentially dangerous, unhealthy situations for families who are paying money to rent those houses and then not in return getting a safe living environment? The flip side of this, Commissioner Almarigi is always really good at presenting the flip side of this is, all right, so what if we end up going in and inspecting a bunch of rental units and now there are families who don't have a place to live because they've essentially been tagged as unsafe? That's a side of, you know, a consequence of potentially going down this road. My personal feeling is that I think we owe it to the community to ensure that the housing that is here is safe and healthy. You know, thinking about mold and all those types of situations, that an inspection process will help ensure that minimum standards are being met. And that was kind of a lot of our conversation. Also, you know, how do we want to regulate it? Is it going to be the same rules for an apartment complex as a house or, you know, kind of going down that road too? I don't think we need to dive into that minutia here, but we definitely spent some time talking about some things like that. And I, yeah.
Would you say it's fair that, because staff hesitated to bring this to the board until there was consensus amongst the planning commission at least, because if we felt like if we couldn't get consensus from the planning commission, that wasn't a good sign.
Was it?
The planning commission ultimately moved to consensus with directing staff that it's their opinion at time, no formal vote taken, of course, but their opinion was that regulating all dwelling units that are rentals, they would be in favor of. And then they went for answering the last question of the three in the memo, a more modest regulation regime would be established, maybe something like a three-year option. And then obviously can point to it if something came up.
Maybe, you know, some of, I think we had mentioned if there were, you know, maybe more than twenty or fifty units, then that might be an every-year type situation or anytime ownership changes or something like that maybe would automatically trigger the inspection process.
Who would do the inspections?
That's a whole other conversation, I guess I really don't want to get into tonight. There are so many options on the table for that. The focus of tonight is getting to that question that we were able to get to with the planning commission, which is, should this move forward? And then all those nuances can be figured out.
I think it should move forward, definitely. Both, large and small.
Yeah, and I guess the planning department's not looking for a formal vote tonight, just consensus of interest in the topic.
You made that pretty clear, that was good, yeah. Yeah, I think what we've seen over at those apartments is, I mean, it's appalling, especially when the news is out there filming people in their apartments as a way of saying, isn't this bad and here it is in our community. That didn't really make me feel great about Bath Township that evening, so I would really support us making sure people are living in safe conditions, including the students. Yeah, this is to, you know, to protect our citizens, to protect our residents, so whether they rent or, you know.
All right, so I'm not hearing any objections, so I want to take that as consensus. All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Miles. Don't go anywhere. You want to talk to us about the zoning ordinance amendment thirty-one point eighty-nine landscape?
Yes, this one is easier to talk about. I, just most simply put, prior to my time here, I think just prior to my time here, this ordinance was adopted. It, how it's numbered in the, or this article was adopted within the zoning ordinance, how it's numbered is just uncommon for a zoning ordinance. There's not much else to say about it. It's caused some confusion among the development firms operating our area. I know when I first got here, Kebbs was like, you guys have a, where is the landscaping article? And I informed him, it was, it's after all the administrative articles, which, again, every municipality zoning ordinance looks slightly different, but there's a typical framework to the zoning ordinance, and this is odd for the typical framework. All the planning department is suggesting is to renumber this and put it with the body of the ordinance where most of the standards are located and then bump down all subsequent articles by one. We're not looking to change the nature.
It's just renumbering.
Character, we're renumbering. Unfortunately, even when we renumber, this is the process.
Okay.
All right, any questions? Thanks.
Thanks, Miles.
Thank you. That brings us to fourteen, large A, small C, fourth quarter budget amendments.
Microphone back on. You had in your packet tonight two pages, on page eighty-nine and ninety, of proposed budget amendments. The first page and the top of the second page is amendments that you previously approved in conducting business on behalf of the board here at irregular meetings. So none of these should be a surprise because they're individual items that you've acted on in the past. What you have at the second half of page two, which is page ninety, is the three departments that I think will be the most important to watch as we move through the next month at the township here. Computer services, police department and fire department. In addition, I have noted that benefits in all departments will be something that we need to keep an eye on. The, what makes this difficult is even though we are on a calendar year, for the budget, twenty twenty-five benefits can still continue to come in for the first, I think, three months of twenty twenty-six. So unfortunately, what happens through the end of the year can impact the bottom line of the benefits if there are claims. So I will continue the first couple of meetings in December, bring you back more firm budget amendments that I recommend. Our accounting firm of Maynard Costerison has recommended that we even consider a special meeting before the very end of the fiscal year on December thirty-first, that we may require a special meeting just for budget amendments. I try not to do that to you, but if it was a waiting game, I would have to do that. I hope that is not the case. This is not, in terms of the amount, is not a lot to keep an eye on, but it will be critical to ensuring we have the proper accounting for a good audit as we have had in the past. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those on either previously approved or what we're keeping an eye on through the end of the year. Not seeing any, so thank you very much. Stay tuned.
All right, that brings us to large, excuse me, just fourteen. Normal-sized fourteen.
Just normal-sized fourteen.
Large B, no, large A, excuse me, small d, health insurance. It's health insurance, it doesn't matter where it's at, it's health insurance.
It's health insurance.
Do you want to get us started?
Do you want to, I know you sent out an email, would you like to speak to that or just, we can just dive right into what we have here?
We did not coordinate this very well.
We did not.
Because I was out of town, so.
Yes.
Here is what I was thinking, that the board could talk about concepts, but we don't have any information to talk about price yet.
Correct.
Because the concepts affect the price. So do you want to talk about like how we got to where we are today and why this is suddenly urgent?
Yes, so since I came here, Brenda and I discussed this today because we're the longest, two of the longest-serving employees next to other, I think, two other, Christie and Beth, I think, are the longest-serving employees, and then Brenda and I come in at a, not a close second, but second. So when we came here, Brenda, I think in ten, and then myself in twelve, the township had a plan, I can't remember what the insurance was, but they had an account with a bank and people received, I don't know if it was a health savings account or if it was a reimbursement account, but any unused money that was funded by the township that was unspent reverted to the employee at that time. So it was township-funded and then obviously the employees benefited from not using that, those funds. We changed to the plan that we have now, I believe in two thousand thirteen or fourteen. We've had this plan where the township has paid the entirety of the cost of the premium of the health insurance and the employees have received a health reimbursement card that funded the deductible. So three thousand for a single person on insurance and up to six thousand dollars for family coverage. I think recently it's gone to?
Thirty-three and sixty-six.
Thirty-four hundred and sixty-six hundred.
So thirty-four hundred and sixty-six hundred. The township footing the bill for all of that. U of M is going to eliminate that coverage from existence, and so we are one of many, especially in the local area, that need to find different coverage for employees. I began working with a gentleman at Kaepernick, or Capnic, I'm sorry, I want to put a Pernic in there, Capnic, which is a broker. I'm pleased to be moving away from the current broker that we have and working with Mike Harp, and he already is a breath of fresh air and is honest and forthcoming. So in looking at the types of coverage that are available to us, we're in a unique position because we're considered a small employer and even though we have, we still have less than fifty full-time employees, we do benefit from some of the risk of a pooled insurance. Because we had the HRA, we called it a RAP, with that, not a lot of people want to bid or offer us insurance. So I think we had three companies, Priority Health, Blue Care Network and HAP, that were willing to do that. Add to the complexity, we have police and fire, which traditionally can have higher expenses related to their healthcare. Because that coverage ends at the end of this year, because bids are occurring now, we have the opportunity to receive plans, to create a plan for our employees, but of course, the more you add, the more it costs. So fundamentally, what I would like to occur is for you all to have a discussion about what that looks like from a, an expenditure level, if we want to continue to do the same things that have been done in the past, if it's time to make changes to that plan, and whether what your priorities are, if they would be to save money or to provide a good benefit to our employees and possibly have our employees pay for some of those items as well out of their funds. So at this time, it looks like Blue Care Network is going to be a really good fit for the township, and they offered us thirteen different plans. So of course, it can be very complicated in how we get to what we need to do, but I think the first question that will help, Taylor and I, go ahead, please.
I've got a process mapped out, if that's okay.
That's fantastic.
You got a what, so?
Process.
Process.
Map away.
Taylor, would you be our Vanna White of the board?
Yeah, we're.
Will you set it up here?
Oh.
He said that at the beginning, before the meeting.
No, I met with Mike Harp on Friday, and he gave me just a lot to think about. The number one thing he made very clear to me, though, is that we have to, we have to move on this. Otherwise, our employees will not have health insurance come January one. That, to me, is unacceptable, so I imagined you all would feel the same way. So what we need to do is settle on some concepts of health insurance where we want to land, and what I'm going to ask us to do then in the next section of the meeting is empower Karen to take those concepts, build the plan and contract on our behalf. There won't be enough time for us to review the actual cost of the plan and approve it. We can't wait two weeks.
Correct.
Or we will not have health insurance for our staff come the first. So, Adam.
Correct.
So this is something I hate doing, this is something I usually complain about doing when we do it, is voting on things when we don't have costs associated with them. This is perhaps the one time I'm asking you to deviate from that because I think it's very, very important that our folks don't lose healthcare coverage come January first. Al?
What does the wood have?
I have no idea.
I mean, they must, they're either in the same boat we are, or they've got a good company.
So the city is smaller than us.
Yeah, but the township has a fire department, they have a police department.
Correct. They've gone with another product that I was not interested in going with.
Okay.
So there's six categories that we need to decide on today. Could you write these six categories, please, Madam White? The first is individual versus family. You're killing it already, Taylor.
I mean, we do have.
I didn't either.
The teacher in me is just saying, like we.
But it's on a whiteboard.
Yeah. I mean, you make a little slideshow, whatever.
I was in Nashville last month, or last week, sorry. Healthcare.
Individual or family healthcare?
You just cool your shorts and your stuff. Versus dental. Versus vision. Really, it's healthcare only versus dental versus vision.
And dental and vision, yeah.
One hundred percent pay by township. This is what I did in Nashville with Mike.
Oh, he's with you, huh?
No, I was on Zoom. Versus shared cost.
She would have written.
No, take artistic license.
So for the record, I mean, I know where I'm. I hire a lot of Latino.
High deductible. Versus low deductible.
Just put low.
Didn't she write this down? HRA versus no HRA. Life and disability versus no life and disability. I guess it'd be death and ability, right?
Yeah. There you go.
Wonderful. Do you have a red marker? Could you circle the following items for me, please?
I have the brace. Oh, it does, yes.
And your health insurance paid for that, right?
Uh, yep.
Good. Family. Dental and vision, both, please.
The whole.
However you want to do it, yeah. Hundred percent pay. Low deductible. We can sort of leave HRA versus no HRA and then life and disability. So these are the core concepts of the insurance that we're currently offering, and we need to decide if we'd like to offer this or something like this.
Can I make a correction?
Sure.
You might not know this. Dental, we actually, we're required to have dental up to nineteen years old.
Yeah, the ACA rules.
Right.
So that'll be wrapped into the healthcare plan.
We're talking about adult. We're talking about adult dental.
Okay.
Okay, so that's adult dental.
After adult dental, we are given a certain amount.
It's a flex account.
It's a flex account.
Yeah, that would be like H R A or F S A.
Okay, that's where you're putting it there.
Either of those.
Okay, okay.
I just didn't know if you were aware of that.
Okay.
I didn't know the specifics, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, s- so the items in red are more costly. Again, we don't, because we're going to mix and mash these things up, it, we can't have an exact amount today, right? We just don't have the modeling without their computer program to say, give me, you know, item A, item C, number twenty-one, and we have a total. So we're going to have to sort of go on our feelers on this one and what we want to do for staff. What we do know is every plan is going to be more than our current plan.
Correct.
Our current plan is no longer offered, not only is the company closing, the plan no longer meets the insurance regulation, we cannot offer it legally. So we have to make a change and it is going to be costly and I think we just have to uh, swallow that pill. How costly will be based on these decisions. So individual versus family is, is the township going to offer just insurance for our employee? Or our employee plus their family?
What do we currently offer?
The red one circle.
I mean, we're really considering drafting people from their insurance in one month.
Family. No, I'm, no, I'm just, hold on, Kay, I'm just giving you what the options are. I'm not advocating for any of these things. There is a third option here, but Mike has indicated it is not, no one does this. You could cover a individual plus one, which is intended to be a spouse, but could be a single parent plus one. He said people just don't do that, they usually, usually do individual or family.
I mean, if we employ an individual who is a single parent, their child would have no other option for insurance if we did not cover them as a family.
No, they'd have the my child insurance. But will you just let me go through all of them?
Okay.
And then we, and again, I'm not advocating that we kick anybody off from insurance.
I already know where I stand on this, but we can go through it all.
So individual versus family. Uh, healthcare only versus dental versus vision. So we can choose to only offer healthcare and then allow uh, employees to opt in to dental and vision at their own. Cost. Or we could offer some sort of cost share or offer to pay it, which leads into the third option, which is a hundred percent pay by township, which is functionally what we have now, versus a shared cost. Uh, Mike told me to have a hundred percent covered by the employer is now absolutely very rare. Uh, most folks have moved to a shared cost model. Some are a hundred percent of the individual staff member and the shared cost comes from the family. We could do fifty, we have, this is one of the places where we have all of the ability in the world to make it what we want it to be. Uh, where some like guidance is going to be helpful for Karen. High deductible versus low deductible, right now we have that high deductible plan that's wrapped in the H R A. That is not an allowable option anymore. So we have to choose whether we want a high deductible, which costs employees more, or a low deductible, which costs us more. Whether we want the H R A versus no H R A or F S A, whatever, some sort of flexible or health spending account. There's a couple of options there. Uh, and then would we cede that with money and how much, and again, whatever is allowable in the insurance rules. And then do we offer life and disability versus no life and disability? Again, the core benefits that Mike has indicated most employers offer is life and disability because it's difficult for people to get them on their own. Uh, and often people just don't get them on their own because it's a lot of work. So his recommendation at its core is that we cover at least health insurance for our employee, life and disability, and uh, offer some sort of uh, cost share as we see fit. That is sort of like the core of what most employers would offer. If our employees were like, we hate the new township plan, we're going to work somewhere else. They would most likely interact with this type of plan other places. That's not true of all places, but other places. So these are the six things that we need to give Karen some idea of where we want to land. If we choose all the red circles, which is the best health plan, which mirrors somewhat what we have now, other than the high deductible part, we're going to spend a lot of money and a whole lot more money than we're spending now. Because remember, even the lowest plan that we're moving to costs more than our current plan. Karen, did I miss anything? Is there anything to add in terms of what you need from us tonight?
You have the list. I know, it's, it's similar, really similar, but um. Yeah, I think if we dig into the flex, I think we're.
What is flex?
Um, it's how I refer to, there's a bank of money here at the township that each employee gets. Um, employee, union employees get it per their contract, um, of it fifteen hundred dollars where people can be reimbursed for expenses not covered under vision. Dental, like I could go have my teeth cleaned and I can, I can get reimbursed for that amount, um, from that account.
So we have parameters that are required by union contract then?
That would supersede this, whatever we.
For union.
Oh, I'm impressed.
For the union, but we're also in negotiations, so.
What?
Yeah.
The union cannot have the plan they currently have.
Correct.
Okay.
So like that is also on the, whether they want to say it's in their contract or it is not offered anymore.
Well, the reason I ask is, I mean, is it by name in the union contract that's currently in?
Yep.
Okay, so it's just benefits of.
No, it's by design.
That's specified, it's the flex account. The flex is part of their negotiated.
And just out of virtue of ignorance, um, where does the money come from that is in that flex account?
From the township.
Okay, a hundred percent.
A hundred percent.
Is, and there's a set amount per employee?
Correct.
And they get that annually or what?
Correct.
Does it bank or does it roll over?
They can carry over for two years.
Two years.
We do have some employees that, that do roll it over because they want to be for braces or some, some larger medical expense that they're planning for. Usually it's braces.
So uh, the other piece to this is our staff is issuing these reimbursement checks to our staff. So there's some added administrative work. If you ever look at the monthly bills that we get every month, you'll see like individual checks to all of our staff.
Things every month.
Yes, so like that is also an added burden to our staff.
Time suck.
Time, yeah, and, and, and it makes people have to sort of like nickel and dime, they have to pay it first and get reimbursed.
Okay, that's what that is, a re, those are reimbursement checks then, okay.
Yes.
We need to end that process.
So, Kay, you said you know where you land, do you want to get us started then?
Sure.
Okay.
You ready?
I'm ready for it.
Um, I've, on the one hand, I feel, it feels unfortunate to me that we are having to have this conversation at literally the eleventh hour. My husband's employer is a U of M health plan. We knew in February that it was coming to an end. They had their open enrollment in October, just like everybody else. So it, I don't know how we have pushed this off so late, but I feel like it's putting all of us in a really bad position because we're having to make some changes for our employees almost six weeks out from the effective date. And, and as a public employee who doesn't make a lot of money either, like all these salaries we just looked through, that's a lot, that's a huge burden worry on everybody's shoulders. Because I imagine most of our employees take our healthcare, probably because it's so great, but.
And free.
I can't, though, my other feeling is, I can't in good conscience recommend people having to start paying a whole bunch of money out of pocket with virtually no notice. That to me seems almost unconscionable that we would ask them to. I understand they're not union employees and that sort of goes with territory. But at the same time, everyone else's open enrollment passed a month ago. How, you know, if, if they've elected to go with this and they didn't take their spouses, they probably still could because it would fall under changes, blah, 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 blah. But I don't know. It feels, it feels really unfair to ask people to start paying a significant amount of money out of pocket in such short notice.
What seems unfair is the U of M dropping us that fast.
No, they're not dropping us that fast. They've known for a year that they're closing down, U of M.
Okay.
It's been common knowledge, everybody's known.
Did we?
So.
So we knew this?
So.
We did know.
We did know and the gentleman that we're working with brought us, I don't have the other packet with me.
You're talking the broker that you previously worked with?
The broker, um, when Taylor and I met with him two weeks ago.
The last time, yes.
So within the last two weeks, I'm offering you a timeline. He brought insurance to us and it was Priority, H A P and Blue Care Network. As he was telling us, those were the options for us. Meeting with him, um, with Ryan last week, it was down to Blue Care Network. This is ultimately changing and I don't know how other people did it because he was literally telling us that people would not bid on this until October. So I don't know how other people changed and got information because I still don't have cost information. So I am legitimately telling you, I have not the information that you are telling me people are open enrolling for because our open enrollment starts usually twelve, one. And it, our, our insurance starts January first. So I'm not saying it's not possible, I'm saying Taylor and I have been working on this since July and meeting with Mike.
And we just got.
And we just got numbers.
And they're hard numbers.
And they're not no, they're not good numbers.
And it's been like this ever since I started working here, it's always the last minute, yeah.
So I'm offering to you that you may say it's poor planning and I would offer to you that it's not poor planning, like.
Well, I'm not saying it's poor planning, I'm just saying it's an unfortunate situation that we are put in having to make this, I mean, ultimately you're making the decision. But having to offer our perspective on what's going to impact a lot of people, most likely negatively.
Well, what I can offer you is that I think that the um, decision can be made for twenty twenty-six and then I think we have to revisit this situation and pull some of those levers that are available to us in twenty twenty-six for twenty twenty-seven.
That's something that I would feel much more comfortable with um, than sort of burning it down right now.
And then, and I agree with you, um, it would be a significant amount of change. But what I'm offering to you is the perspective that we didn't sit on this.
No.
I can assure you, we did not sit on this.
Like just Ingham County with a larger employee had more sway in.
I mean, we're.
We're considered.
Going with Blue Cross.
They're going with Blue Cross. A small pool.
The other difference is Ingham County could probably take the plan that they did have with U of M into another provider. We can't do that because the plan is not compliant.
Ours is not compliant.
We shouldn't have had it, which is a different conversation for a different day, but.
Right, but I do definitely think it's worthwhile setting up some sort of um, H R A or whatever to stop this constant reimbursement, paying out of pocket first, which is a pain, submitting the paperwork. Somebody's got to look at the receipt, somebody's got to issue the, it's just so stupid.
So what, so what Blue Care Network offers us, and I'm not trying to interrupt you, I'm trying to offer you the information that I know we have available to us, is that they will, unlike what we had previously where a different company was, was managing the, the um, H R A, Blue Care Network will manage this. And it's a, a situation where I will go for my uh, healthcare, whatever I'm doing and Blue Care Network um, will help me if I don't describe this correctly.
Blue Care Network will bill it according to where it needs to go. So if it's something that goes against the deductible that's covered with the H R A, then it will go to that and then Blue Care bills the township for all of the H R A.
Township, so it's managed by the insurance company.
That's what they're going to with Ingham County.
So, so just to offer that to you and.
I mean, I just think it's, it would save some work. I mean, I've been looking through these for years going, why are we doing this?
Yeah, I, I agree, it is not a good use of our employees' time. I, I'm in favor of shifting some costs to the in, to the employee. I, I think we should cover a hundred percent of the employee and then like fifty percent of the family. And while I, why I feel a little more comfortable, I'm not very comfortable, to your point earlier, Kay, I think it is at the last minute. But our shifts in the retirement account, our staff should start feeling that. So they are feeling some savings already in their paycheck. This would not be anywhere near the, the costs that they were having to pay for their uh, retirement. Uh, so it's a little bit of a trade-off, not a full trade-off. But I think we have to start getting them to the point of some sort of cost share because if we went like a hundred percent red circle, which is what I would want for me and my family, it, it is.
You'd lose lots of money.
Costs prohibitive, unfortunately. You know, I'm, I'm on Medicare and I don't know if Al you are too, but my costs are, well, I pay a hundred and seven, a hundred and eighty dollars a month already and mine is going up considerably, just by virtue of someone in Washington cutting things. But um, you know, we all unfortunately are going to have to bite the bullet a little bit.
I was telling ladies earlier, I said, my son is on the Children's Special Healthcare through the state of Michigan and I have to pay two hundred and forty-nine dollars a month for him to be on that. So for this, I'd gladly pay this and not have to pay that. You know?
He's not covered under your plan here?
He is, but he has other costs incurred that, yeah. Yep.
So what I, I, my counter offer is close to yours, so maybe we can find some um, you know, connection here. Is that it would be a hundred percent individual, fifty percent family. I do think we should offer that, those same cost shares for dental and vision. And I think uh, we should go with a low deductible plan because a high deductible plan is just really, really hard for employees and, yeah, people in general.
They do offer a high deductible plan, but the employer pays a certain amount of that deductible into a health savings account.
That's what we can't do anymore without acknowledging it. And if we acknowledge it, we get charged more. Because it's costing the insurance company more to cover those things.
Okay.
It's like they've figured out the trick.
So, yeah, so the, the explanation Mike offered, and I don't know if he said this to you too, was that if employees have to pay their deductible, they're not going to utilize their insurance as much. If the township covers it, it's almost free for them to use the benefit. And they're more likely to use the benefit. I don't know that that's true, but that's.
Risk pool changes, but it's, it's a gross thing, right? Like if we charge them, they don't get healthcare and that's, helps the pool. But like from the actuarial tables, that, that's where it's at. So if we do, we, we could do that, but we have to acknowledge it, it drives the prices back up.
So there wouldn't be a savings realized then by.
Not as much, at least. We also could offer the flex spending account that is fully funded by them pre-tax.
So they can put money in there?
Yes. So they would, you know, say twenty-five hundred dollars a year, I want pre-tax in the flexible spending. And that's not a perverse incentive because it's not us paying for it, it's them paying for it and there's some tax benefit to them. So that's another piece here that plays into that. Um, and if, 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 again, we were saying what I would pitch, I would say that would be the option, is have them buy in tax-free. And then I obviously think we need to cover the life and disability. That would be my.
Do we offer cash and move for people who do not take our benefits because they take them from their spouses?
So we do, um, so we have uh, two non-union, three non-union employees that currently don't take the benefit. And I think two or three union employees um, that take other insurance, but at varying levels. I think at this point, um, uh, the ones that have V A benefits have families. Whereas um, the other people that don't take the benefits here, I think are a, an employee plus a spouse. Um, but we do have three different rates for single employee plus one and then for family.
I would also advocate that we don't do that anymore. That is a dying trend.
I'm gathering that information right now from all the townships and stuff.
Yeah.
M M T A has a list that I'm on and that question was actually asked today.
That exact.
So, that exact question, and so I showed them earlier and so we're going to get a spreadsheet going so you can see what people are doing.
Post A C A, when you were required to have health insurance, it didn't make sense to pay someone to take their health because they were required to do it anyway. Now that tax incentive has shifted, it's not quite as, the Supreme Court sort of gutted that a bit. But still, post A C A, people are like, we're offering you health insurance because we want you to have health insurance. Either take ours or don't, but we're not going to pay a fee. And what we've seen is that most people do what they were going to do anyway. Because they're typically going with their spouses because it's free or better coverage. They're not going to not do that because we're not offering them, you know, whatever, the five hundred bucks a month or whatever it is we do. So it's another place for us as a township to save money and we're coming more in line with what most places do.
I would offer per month, it's like two, I, I'm going to just throw a number out, they're not the exact numbers, but I would say like two fifty, single, five hundred a month.
It's, it's one eighty, single, I believe, uh.
So she knows.
And, well, I do payroll, so I see it. Um, for employee plus spouse, it's about four sixty and then for a family, it's about five eighty.
And that's, what, what does that cost covered?
That's for if you don't take our insurance.
We give you.
Oh, 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 monthly?
We give you monthly.
Okay.
See, I would have said two fifty-five and seven fifty, but. See, I would've said two fifty-five and seven fifty, but it was an approximate.
What are other folks thinking?
So, I mean, if we eliminated that, would that offset some, I mean, a small amount?
A small.
Small, for, I mean, there's five employees, so.
Yeah, it's a little bit.
But it could be more theoretically too.
Well, yeah. So is that what you're saying, this is going to affect only five employees?
No.
No, just this, just the cash component of, of paying them not to take our benefits.
Just the cash.
Oh, oh, oh. In lieu of, yeah. Well, do you want a compilation of what we are going for and not what we're going for?
I mean, I think it's helpful that Kate threw out her thoughts, I threw out, I think that where there's like some, some consensus, I think it gives Karen the idea of what she needs to go then price out. Because what she's gonna need to do is call Mike tomorrow and say, give me option A, option C, option D, option F, and price it out for me. We can do that.
So if we're gonna potentially require people to pay, are we going to give them a choice? Like, I know most open rol, most open enrollments say you've got a couple of different
Plans.
Plans that you could choose from. Obviously, if it's a hundred percent paid, like, what choice is there? But if suddenly now you are paying more out of pocket, are there going to be some potential plans and ways that you could choose how you want to do that? And let the employee choose for themselves if they wanted to go with something more high deductible, or if they wanted to go with.
So I would offer.
I mean, that's pretty typical.
That the alternates that are available from Blue Care Network, there's two that I think Taylor and I narrowed it down to that would be, um, worth providing. I mean, there's thirteen of them, but there's, really, there's two. Um, and one has a, um.
Co-pay.
One is a lower deductible, one's higher deductible, um, co-insurance is about the same, um, annual out of pocket is about the same. Physician office, like co-pays are, uh, a little bit higher in one of them. Um, and then, uh, prescriptions, what I think would probably be the other difference. So not a lot of, of difference in the plan.
Do we have a cost, a cost estimate of what kind of what we're paying per employee annually now? For, for what we're presently offering them?
So right now, we pay approximately three hundred thousand dollars, um, a year for, it's two eighty, um, for the current benefits.
And that's for how many employees? Divided into that, just, just so I can have a, a head count.
Twenty-four enrolled in our current U of M plan.
The challenge too, Ray, is it's a different amount for each person based on their.
Because it's based on age.
So if we hire more, why isn't seasoned people, they cost us more.
Because they get sick.
They break down, we, we break down.
Well, one thing I strongly, strongly, uh, am against is a hundred percent pay. Because that incentivizes people to go when they think they're sick and things of that nature. I know that for a fact, just by virtue of having four sisters and, and previously having a hundred percent pay in our family, so. That's, that's something, unless we're just so flush with money, we can, you know, give them bonuses every, every year, but we're not.
You guys just wanna go down the line?
Do you wanna?
I feel like I already gave my input, I don't think it's fair to drastically change people's health insurance in a month.
I would.
I asked them to big, pick up this cost.
I would offer, I'm not trying to, to sway this, but I would offer that, when I heard you say fifty percent, um, for family in the first year, I would offer that we would do something more like a twenty percent in the first year, and make that change in the, like, coming into that second year. Um, but that, that is, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, like, a slow walk might be more appropriate.
Instead of just the individual and then fifty percent for any other family member, do the family, but then, instead of the hundred percent, do the eighty, twenty cost or something.
Yeah.
Which most businesses do, most people have to pay twenty percent of their health care.
That might be more palatable in the, in the ti, in the shorter timeframe, that's all I'm offering.
Instead of cutting everybody off, at least they're, everybody's getting their insurance for the whole family. But yes, you're gonna have to pay twenty percent of your healthcare now. And does the healthcare cover dental and vision, or can people, or is it just healthcare? And then we as an individual can say, I would like dental and vision also?
Yeah, it's an option, so like we can say, we'll do the healthcare, dental and vision at whatever the mix of rates.
Okay.
Or we're only gonna do healthcare at whatever mix of rates, and then one hundred percent by option, which is what you're talking about, like where you can go through and choose the options in the portal.
That might be the all-in-one.
Could be dental and vision.
Okay.
Dental of the two is the most expensive, vision is actually incredib, in my opinion, incredibly cheap.
Correct, that is correct.
Yes.
But we will get, get rid of the, where we put the money in and they can spend it on the dental, what did you call it?
Our flex.
F S A.
Yeah, flex.
So they can do that?
So we decide we're gonna get rid of that one, right?
Yeah, I think we get rid of the flex spending.
It, it sounds like what I was understanding is that we would get rid of the in-house flex, and there would be a flex.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the flex account is important for people who now have healthcare costs because that gives them a way to pay them pre-tax at least.
Yeah.
Yep.
But we do it, we would do it according to IRS, um, rules and.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Is that the health saving that we have changed?
No, it's a.
So, Kate, I have a question for you.
It's a different one?
It's called the flex spending account.
You've been very vocal about, and I agree, about being inhumane, you know, about increasing in a month. I, I agree with that, but, um, how long do you think we as the employer should go without?
Well, I think we commit to this year, and then at open enrollment next October, we can roll out some different plans.
So you're saying a year and a month, or eleven months?
Well, it starts January first.
Yeah.
Our open enrollment's in December.
Oh, okay.
But I mean, you just look through that budget, none of those salaries on there are large salaries for anyone. And now we're expecting them to pay twenty percent, and they're, we just said, what, they're about twenty thousand dollars per person? Twenty percent of that is five thousand dollars, that's five hundred some bucks a month. New expense, potentially, based on what you need to use, of course. That's a lot, that, that completely wipes out what they just got back from MERS. And that's a pretty unfortunate gift to give somebody when you turn around and take it right back.
True, but that's a social, sociological thing, you know? Are we socially obligated to pay more to people that make less?
That's not what I'm saying, but I'm saying I think we are obligated to be a good employer.
Well, def, well, I, you know, you can be a bad employer, but you won't have very many good employees.
I don't think, I wish I had the math in front of me, Kate, but I don't think what you said actually will play out. If you think our staff was paying like a thirty-ish, twenty-six, thirty percent of their salary, and we'd be asking them just to pay fifty or some percent of the healthcare costs, the first number's gonna be much bigger.
I just went through what Karen said, this is how much we pay, we have X amount of employees, some quick mental math, just divided that out. That's where those numbers came from. But I know what my deductibles and co-pays and whatnot look like for my Blue Care insurance plan. So, yeah, it probably is a few hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, mhm, for sure.
Off of, I mean, we just went through those budgets, those salaries are not large salaries.
So what do you suggest?
I mean, I think to her point, I just did quick math, um, so just for the healthcare premium divided by the twenty-four, it, I mean, uh, an employee could be paying twenty percent, it might be a hundred and seventy dollars a month. Just to throw out, I know it's not a real number, but.
But that's a swag, you know, that I think is, could be fairly accurate. And I don't think that's, I don't think that's, uh, inhumane. Unfortunately, you know, our costs are gonna go up, and ergo, we have to charge more in taxes to somehow fund that. So where does it, where does it, uh, get easier? Excuse me? Where does it get easier?
No, it doesn't get any easier, and it's not gonna get any easier.
I don't think it does get easier.
But I don't certainly think it's our employees' fault that we're in this position.
Hmm, no, it's capitalist's fault.
Yeah, it's P H P's fault for U of M's fault for not.
Well, you know, they could've been losing money, and that's why they, they don't sell their product anymore, that's just the cost of doing business.
And I totally get that, but what's kind of bothering me about it is this short timeframe.
Yeah, I, I totally agree.
And, you know, this, everybody who works here lives here, these, these are our friends, these are our neighbors. These aren't just these, uh, amorphous beings in the, on the other side of the glass over there.
True.
So I say family, I say healthcare, the dental vision.
Optional?
Those are optional, if the employee wants it, they try to get it. I say eighty, twenty cost share, I'm the one that has to pay it, I, this is me, I know this is coming to me. I have to do this for my family, so I like the low deductible, obviously the life and disability.
Eighty, twenty what?
Twenty percent cost to me.
Of?
The fee, the.
The premium?
Yeah.
The, just the healthcare?
Yeah.
And what about a?
And it would be my choice for dental and vision, if I.
What about a flex?
I would agree to a flex if the township would fund it to help pay.
Well, I thought the employee funded it.
Well, I, yeah, I, yeah, but it's.
That's what I'm, that's what I would.
It's like a flex is.
It's like an add-on.
It's an add-on, I would do, but it's taxed.
Pre-tax.
Pre-tax dollars, like H, like your five, your four fifty-seven and all that.
Four, four oh one, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're saying let the employee have a F S A?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And for the people that are ignorant, oh, academics, F S A is?
Flexible spending, or, thank you, I thought it was spending, savings account.
Savings account.
It basically just pulls some money out of your paycheck pre-tax and puts it into a designated account. It can only be spent on healthcare expenses.
Or you could pay your child pay out of it.
Childcare, back in the.
Or you can have a separate one for childcare.
Yeah, back in the day, I had one for childcare for AJ.
I did too, I had childcare and I had.
And you elect at the beginning of the year, I want X amount of dollars to go into it, you have to spend it in that year though.
Yep.
I hate to bring this up too.
As opposed to a health savings account, which you can keep forever.
Yeah.
It was just mentioned three times, and it's been brought up to me by several individuals in the, in the township, more than several, healthcare costs.
Yeah.
Young couples can't even afford to have children because they can't afford to pay for somebody to watch their children while they're working. And that's something I think, unfortunately, I think we should look at too. Not necessarily to pay for it, you know, but maybe make some incentives for healthcare facilities to grow in our area. You know, and give them some incentive to build here and work here and watch our kids here. Anyway, there we go, now back to, uh, our regularly scheduled program.
Brenda, Al, haven't heard much from you, what are your thoughts?
I agree with John.
You liked everything I said?
Yep.
And you and I are the ones that are gonna have to pay this, I mean, sitting here on the board.
Yeah, I agree with Jennifer. I, uh, I'm lucky, Michigan State pays.
Oh, yeah.
My total amount.
Okay.
But social security, they don't ask me, do you wanna pay more this year?
No, they don't, they just stay.
Shove it to you.
Yep, that's it.
I mean, we don't wanna make these changes, but we have to make them.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not what we wanna do.
To Kate, what Kate's saying, I totally agree a hundred percent with what the argument Kate's making, but something's gotta give.
And I will say that the employees that are new here, they were paying for healthcare before they came here.
Yep.
So they were like, they already got a raise when they came here because they're like, I'm not paying for healthcare already. So, I mean, I know of three employees that said that to me, you know?
I mean, I would offer, when I came in twelve, I saved on not driving thirty miles and I didn't have to pay for healthcare, so. That offset the pay cut I took to come here.
Yeah.
Oh, you took a pay cut to come here? So, just to work with you.
All right, anybody else?
Actually, it was to work with you.
And what about the people who are not taking our, the people we do buyouts for?
Yeah, I don't, I don't hear consensus on the buyout.
She's gonna look at that.
Okay.
I hear Ryan saying it's not a thing anymore, and I hear Kate saying she thinks it is, or it is, but.
Well, it is a thing.
Yeah, well, no, I'm just saying.
No, I didn't say that's not a thing, I'm saying it is not typical anymore.
Yeah, it's running its course.
I misspoke for you, but.
I think in the public sector, it definitely is still a thing.
Um, I disagree, so.
Really?
It's not a big thing.
Both my husband and I have it.
You still have it.
Well, the reason I say that is, is it's a benefit.
Yeah, I mean, you work, you both work at like the last bastions of good healthcare.
No, well, apparently you haven't been paying attention to what's happened to educators in the legislature in terms of their healthcare, but police officers, yes.
So what do you want from us so we can go home and eat pizza?
What was your consensus, what do you?
I, I agree with you, those were the exact things that I said.
Okay. Ryan's got it written down, yeah.
Yeah.
And the other two are optional?
Eighty, twenty is the shared.
The healthcare is eighty, twenty?
Yeah.
Low deductible.
Yep.
Life and disability, and then you said yes to a flex spending account, but you said funded by the township, not by the individual.
Well, I don't think you can do that though, right?
You can, you just have to declare it, which makes the price of everyone know.
We don't wanna do that, the employee can.
So funded by the employee.
So do, do an IRS, like F S A?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the dental and vision were optional on the employee, yeah.
If the employee wanted to do that.
Will you just write employee over those?
Then how about the minor though, how about the minor dental?
Well, that's included in the healthcare.
It's included in the healthcare.
Okay, okay.
The pediatric.
Blue Care Network covers it for pediatric dental, they have to.
Correct, correct.
I got Jacob for another year, so.
Does it go up to nineteen?
Doesn't it go up to twenty-six?
No, it's nineteen.
No, that's just for healthcare.
That's for healthcare, oh.
When it comes to the healthcare dental, it only goes to nineteen.
Pediatric dental.
So, you wanna cross out the hundred pay, hundred percent pay by township?
She's writing her red stuff.
Well, I know, but just so we're not looking at it.
She's got it, she's starring everything.
I know what I need to look at, that's what's important.
And she's gonna tell me what I need to look at.
And I think that Kate's suggestion of if there are multiple programs that have some sort of mix where folks could choose, I would say no more than three, because more than three is very complex for people to try to have to wrap their head around.
Three plans, yeah.
But, you know, maybe one of those pieces flips and.
Yeah.
And that gives them some options.
I'm at that same place, I have until December seventh.
All right, uh, I know no one's happy with that discussion, but it does feel like we've landed at somewhat of some consensus.
Yeah.
Um, but I do think we have to be, I think we're gonna need some analysis from Karen into next year to figure out what this is costing us and what's it costing staff.
Yeah.
To be able to decide then again in a year with much more opportunity, uh, to have a runway to change if we think we need to.
Maybe we can see what other like townships are doing and, you know?
Uh, to me, the, the cost is what is gonna drive that, whether other folks are offering worse or better.
Well, definitely, but I mean, you know.
It's just gonna be really costly.
But if we keep a low deductible, that's going to help the employee.
True.
Even if we're asking them to share the eighty, twenty, you know, at least it's not a high deductible, then the eighty, twenty on top of it, you know?
True.
And that's the way I look at it.
And so your analysis will show us like.
Me, when I worked at the bank, that's what it was, you paid eighty, twenty.
Net, net, what, uh, how much extra it's gonna cost us, a year, blah, blah, blah.
I mean, it feels like it's a good compromise between what Kate and I proposed.
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
I mean, I give you my opinion, it's totally my opinion.
I mean, I'd rather it all be a hundred percent too.
You usually do though, so.
Um, okay, and, uh, it's after nine, so I'm gonna make a motion that we set aside the board rules to allow us to tackle the last item, which is empowering the superintendent to contract. Is there a second? I moved, you want a second? We have a motion and a second.
Ruin this along.
Uh, is a voice vote okay for that?
Yeah.
All right, everyone understands, but our board rules say we can't start a new topic after nine, we have to vote on this, so I'm, we're asking you to set that aside. Okay, all those in favor of setting aside the board rules so we can continue the meeting, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, that brings us to item fourteen B A, empowering the superintendent to contract for healthcare.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Second?
So the motion is we're empowering the superintendent to contract on our behalf, using the items that we have provided for her tonight. And you feel like you've got your marching orders, okay?
Thank you.
All right, so we've got a motion, is there a second?
Ray did.
Ray, seconded it?
Whoever.
Nope, Jennifer and Ray.
Jennifer and Ray, okay.
Jennifer and Ray, and then we'll do a roll call vote when you're ready, Brenda.
Okay, hold on.
Yep.
Okay, um, Mr. Katkey?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, you want to, yes, Mr. Rosegrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Uh, is there anything critical in the superintendent's report that we have to hear tonight?
No.
No, all right, public statement too, we have no public. Uh, any, uh, board comments that folks are dying to say, I do have one or two that I just wanna say real quick, but anybody else?
I got one thing. Uh, when I first come on the board here this last time, uh, Dan talked with me and we were getting ready to do the insurance. And Dan said that the year before, when you had, I think you was on that committee, uh, you guys were considering making people start paying.
Yes.
And that's been ten years ago.
Yeah.
If you guys would've got it started, we wouldn't have had to go through this.
Correct. I dropped the ball again.
Now, the people of Bath spoke and they didn't want me to be on the committee anymore, so.
Now, what about that new fire truck, Al?
Uh, I would just wanna say, um, I sent to all of you the preliminary report from the N T S B on the plane crash.